Good evening and welcome. My name is Taylor Kingman, and as President of the SISD Board of Trustees, I would like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular board meeting. I also welcome those of you who are watching the recording of this meeting online or on our public access channel. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of SISD. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the SISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, we have a public comment item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team on an item not on our action agenda or an action item on the agenda an opportunity to do so. Please provide your name and contact information and the specific topic you wish to address on a public comment form located at the back of the room. Please listen carefully and comply with the following rules so we can move through this part of the meeting efficiently. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The district will provide an official timekeeper. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time, and comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Comments are limited to the specific topic you indicate on the form you filled out. Any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, decision, or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. If you have a pending grievance, please remember you should not speak about that during public comment as it affects the grievance process. Also, please understand, if you speak to us on an item not on our action agenda, that the board cannot reply to you except to thank you for your comments since the matter has not been posted for discussion. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become part of SISD's permanent legal record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones. Again, thank you for being here and for your support of SISD. We do have a quorum this evening. Mrs. Cardenas is en route, so she will be here just momentarily. But with that, I'll call the meeting to order, and we're going to start with our invocation. Pastor Jim Noble from the Mid-Tex Conference of the Global Methodist Church is going to help us with that tonight.
Thank you. Let's pray. Lord, I thank you for these servants, all of those who are here, volunteer on a volunteer basis, concerned citizens, interested citizens, and of course, the board members who I know most or all of them work serious jobs on the outside, and boy, do they work, and yet they give time to our community's children, including my child. And I'm so thankful for that because it is a sacrifice of time, and they could be doing many other things. And I thank you, just pray for whatever concerns they're carrying, for their families that aren't here with them. We continue to pray and lift up the people on the north side of San Angelo particularly and across our state who have survived a catastrophic flood. And those efforts are still in the initial phases, and we pray for all of those impacted. As this board and this community builds the next phase of facilities for our community and the public school system, give these folks your eyes, Lord, your ears, your heart, your head, your pens and your gavels to build the very best possible thing for San Angelo students. And I ask all of this, we ask this in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and we say, amen.
Thank you. It's summertime, so we don't have students to help us with the pledges, so if everyone would stand and face the flags, I'll leave us in the pledge allegiance to the United States and Texas. (Inaudible) in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, and let the citizens be free, one state under God, one nation. We have several recognitions this evening. Our first is going to be recognition of the San Angelo ISD department and their staff for the response during the recent flood emergency, and Shannon Schwartz is going to help us with that recognition.
Good evening. If I could go ahead and get all of our maintenance workers and transportation workers who are here tonight to go ahead and stand over here, that would be great. So we're going to start with our transportation team first. We just want to take a moment tonight to recognize and thank some of the unsung heroes of San Angelo ISD, our transportation and maintenance teams for their swift, selfless, and tireless response to the historic flooding that impacted our community on the Fourth of July. When the call came in the early morning that families needed help evacuating their homes, our transportation department stepped in without hesitation. They quickly mobilized and ran two buses to support emergency evacuation efforts, with one bus standing by for over six hours, ready to respond at a moment's notice. Their calm demeanor under pressure and willingness to serve our community in a time of need reflected the very best of who we are. So this time, we want to thank Mr. Lee Livingston, if you want to go ahead and come up to the middle. And we want to thank these individuals for the role that they played in the emergency efforts and for always putting people first. So let's give these guys a round of applause, please. Thank y'all. At the same time, our maintenance team jumped into action, working behind the scenes but playing an absolutely critical role. They moved quickly, going room by room in every one of our schools to assess damage and ensure that our facilities remain safe for students and staff. They've worked tirelessly over the last several days and weeks to remove water, clean up damage, and make sure that our schools are ready to welcome our students and staff into safe and clean learning environments. So please join me in recognizing the fellow team members for their extraordinary efforts. Mr. Tony Kennedy. Mr. David Cuellar. Mr. Pete Cardenas. Ms. Rosie Reyna. Mr. Fidel Luna. Mr. Scott Goodwin. Mr. Trey Harris. Mr. Daniel James. Mr. Alfred Rendosa. Mr. Mario Martinez. Mr. Carlos Santa Anna. Mr. David Tanguma, sorry. Mr. Marty Pedrick. And A.J. Turner, who couldn't be here tonight.
Jasmine Cardenas.
And Jasmine Cardenas, yes. Thank you.
Mrs. Schwartz is going to help us with our next recognition, and that's of Central High School Speech and Debate Team.
Yes, I'm going to get really comfy up here tonight. So next, we're proud to recognize an incredibly talented and hardworking group of students from the Central High School Speech and Debate Team, a team that has had an outstanding 2024-25 season at both the state and national level, under the direction of Coach Kobe Evers. We'll give him a moment to get up here. These incredible students have competed in highly competitive tournaments across Texas and the nation, representing San Angelo ISD with excellence, finesse, and skill. Please help us recognize the following students who qualified and competed at the state and national tournaments. Several of these students earned top finishes, competing against more than 400 entries in each event. Gracie Boswell. Eric Kessler Tate. Aiden Cole. Cooper Coyer. Conley Carter. Cannon Deanda. Reagan Gellian. Elizabeth Havens, who placed fourth in the nation in spoken word. Honor Hernandez. Sam Kirkendall. Indri Landeros. Trey Luso, who placed sixth in spoken word and poetry at Nationals. Sidney McCrummon. Gage McGuffin. Mac Mitchell. Vivian Fluger. Sophie Scott, with who Elizabeth placed third in the state in duet acting. Mallory Taylor. Micah Taylor. Brianna Trevino. Elias Tumare. Akash Vukodi, who placed third in exterraneous, extemporaneous commentary, and Amrita Vukodi. These results speak to their incredible dedication and their powerful voice as young communicators and leaders. We also want to celebrate the coaches and educators behind them for their guidance, their mentorship, and belief in these students. Congratulations to the Central High School Speech and Debate Team. We're very proud of you, and thank you for representing San Angelo ISD so well. So we'll make two rows so that we can get a good group picture.
And parents, if y'all want to take pictures, y'all can as well. Y'all stand there for your parents. He was driving the train.
There we go. Congrats, guys. That's so awesome. Congratulations. Oh, I love that purple. It's so pretty. Congratulations. Congrat-- congratulations. Your face is going to start hurting from all the smiling.
All right, Mrs. Schwartz, you're going to help us with our next recognition as well, and that's for student success at UIL State Championships.
Yes, this is my last one for tonight. So we just get to keep the good things coming. It's one of the best nights ever. So we're also very proud to recognize two exceptional students from Central High School who represented San Angelo ISD at the highest level of academic competition in the state of Texas, the UIL 6A Academic State Meet. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Sam Kirkendall, who earned first place in informative speaking, making him a state champion in the highly competitive category. Sam is coached by Mr. Kobe Evers. We also get to recognize Akash Vukodi, who earned second place in spelling, showcasing incredible focus, penchant, and academic strength. Akash is coached by Mr. Kevin McSpadden.
Yes, sir. Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, and members of the board. The annual Texas Association of School Boards, TASB, Media Honor Roll is an opportunity to recognize our media partners for their dedicated service to our students, their families, our stakeholders, and the school district. At San Angelo ISD, we deeply value the strong and collaborative relationship that we share with our local media. Keeping our community informed is essential to building trust and transparency, and our media partners play a key role in helping us achieve that. Through accurate and consistent coverage, they help communicate timely, district-related information while also amplifying the many positive stories that deserve to be told, whether it's highlighting the accomplishments of a student group, celebrating academic or athletic success, or shining a light on the daily dedication of our teachers and staff. Their coverage helps foster a well-informed and proud community. Recognizing the achievements of our students is powerful. It not only uplifts the student and their family, but it also reinforces a culture of excellence across the district. We're grateful to our media partners for their continued commitment to sharing these stories with integrity and care. This evening, we are honored to recognize several members of the local media who have shown outstanding support for San Angelo ISD over the past year. These individuals exemplify the vital role journalism plays in shaping public perception and supporting public education, a responsibility they carry with professionalism and purpose. At this time, we invite all of our honorees in attendance to come forward as I call your name, accept your certificate, and join Dr. Moran for a group photo. Shay Harris, Concho Sports Network. Aracely Gutierrez, Connectxion San Angelo. Foster Communications. Fred Key. Rick Mantooth. Rick Andrews. Alma Vee. Ethan Purcell, Fox West Texas. Sean Humphrey, Fox West Texas. Kayla McGuire, KLST and KSAN. Carolyn Miller, with San Angelo Family Magazine. Lucas Banda, with San Angelo Live. And Paul Harris, with San Angelo Live. Please join us in congratulating our 2025 TASB Media Honor Roll recipients, recipients, and in thanking them for their service to our schools, our students, and the San Angelo community. Congratulations.
All right, next, we're going to move to item five, which is public comments. And first is Ms. Ginger Moore regarding State Board of Education and Math.
Good evening. I'd first like to thank the board for passing Blue Bonnet Curriculum. That was my paper, pencil, and cursive. Now I'm on math. We were supposed to have a Zoom meeting on math with the TEA this week, and they canceled. But I wanted everyone to know that you can still go online, and you can go to the Texas State Board of Education, Texas Gov., and you can testify in writing on Tuesday and Wednesday of this week about the process math that we have in our schools, because the problem with this is that it's from the teaks. The teaks have the math, so you cannot change the teaks. And if you have the bottom, the foundation is wrong, the rest will be wrong. So you need to go on there. I'm going to write a paper tonight and send it in, but you need to write something about the process math. We need to go back to traditional math. The traditional math is the math that we learned and we can do in our heads. The process math is common core math. And I told that to Governor Abbott years ago, and I was supposed to meet with his team at the Department of Education, and they canceled on me last minute in Austin. But the math is not what our children need. Our children don't like it. Parents can't understand it. And I have a second grade video from the TEA from about eight years ago that showed how to do this process math, and I can't do it. And I sent it to the State Board of Education, and I never got a response as to whether or not they could do it. It is not right for our children to try to learn this math when they are not equipped at second grade to learn it. I can't do it. I have a master's, and I can't do this math. So I'm fighting for the math this time, and I'm hoping that you will go online to the State Board of Education, and let's see. You can go to testimony@stateboardofeducation, sboe@dottext.gov, and they'll take your testimony also on Tuesday, and it closes on Wednesday afternoon. So I am very upset. This has been there since 2013. I have not been able to get it done. I talked to Marty Rowley, who was our State Board of Education rep years ago, and I got the reply back that the University of Texas said it was okay. Yep, that was their reply. So I'm saying that our kids do not like it. I was in a restaurant, and I was talking with somebody about our teaks for math, and a parent cried that was the waitress. She said, "I can't understand this. I cannot do this math." So I think we can have some leeway, maybe, on the math with the teaks the way they are, but currently, the teaks are not changed, the math will not be changed. So we need to start at the basics for our children, and thank you for your service. And we really do-- (Music) Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Next, we have Judson Matlock regarding Senate Bill 401. Jessica, will you help him get the microphone and maybe just let him stand beside? Let him stand beside before we can see him.
(Inaudible).
Thank you, Jessica.
Hi, my name is Judson Matlock. I am seven years old. Please pass this rule so my brother can play soccer and one day I can too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matlock. Next, we have Melissa Matlock regarding Senate Bill 401.
Hi, my name is Melissa Matlock, and I've been in San Angelo for over 41 years now. In my mind, I'm not forty-one, so I'm much younger, but here we are, forty-one years later. I've had the opportunity to homeschool my four children, my husband and I, and we've always been heavily involved in our community, be it church or volunteer work or sports. In regards to SB 401, U.S. School Board members have a choice to help dreams come true for our kids and other kids in our community. My hope is that you will have the answer that will help bridge the gap between qualified homeschool kids to have the opportunity to try out for extracurricular activities within SISD. And I hope that your decision comes before it's too late for our oldest son, which would be this year. He has a big desire to play and just try out for the soccer team. I want to remind you that there is value in our kids being able to participate in sports and extracurricular activities. Being a part of team helps create leaders in our community. It helps them for their future. I also want to remind you that I am a taxpayer, just like every other public kid parent. In regards to opting into the SB 401, it creates fairness within our community, gives our opportunity, kids, to try out for UIL regardless of where their education is coming from. I do believe there needs to be standards set in place by SISD, policies, qualifying marks for homeschool kids to meet in order to justify and to try out. Just as public kids are also held to those standards of filling out registration forms, passing grades, being tested for drugs, all those things, we fully support accountability. My husband and I are willing to share previous policies to be a part and work closely alongside whoever is able to be making like the policies and all those things that just run smoothly. So many previous states over thirty-five-ish, I think thirty-five, have also passed similar SB 401 laws. Back in 1996 is where Tim Tebow Law started in Florida, and then now, I checked on it, all sixty-seven school districts in Florida also allow homeschool kids to participate today. So I urge you not to let the unknown of what-ifs get in the way of building a bridge for our community, for kids, for the future of San Angelo, and I believe that it's, this will not only benefit each student that tries out, but it'll benefit SISD as well. It's about our kids having a chance to grow, belong, and lead here in San Angelo. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Matlock. Next, we have Piper Matlock.
Hi, my name is Piper Matlock. I'm twelve years old, and the sports I've done in my life are softball, soccer, ballet, and gymnastics. I also love to play the piano, ukulele, and I enjoy singing. It would mean a lot to me to participate in sports with my friends in public school. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mrs. Matlock. Next, we have Ms. Sparrow Matlock.
Hi, my name is Sparrow Matlock, and I am ten years old. So far in life, I have tried softball, soccer, gymnastics, and basketball. I also like to sing and play the piano. I really enjoy-- I also like to sing and play the piano. I really enjoy painting and art. If I were able to do things with my friends at school, it would be fun and make my heart happy. Please pass a rule for homeschool kids to play sports with public school kids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Matlock. Next, we have Jericho Matlock.
Hello. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Jericho Matlock. I am fifteen years old and I'm going into the ninth grade. I fell in sock, I fell in love with soccer when I was five years old and I've played it ever since. In fact, this past weekend, I had the opportunity to go play in the All-American in Round Rock, Texas. And getting nominated to play there meant so much to me, just like getting to play sports for SAISD would. Being able to participate in the UIL events would mean a lot, not just to me, but all the homeschool students in San Angelo. Homeschoolers should be allowed to participate in UIL events because they still live, because they are still Texas students and should have equal access to extracurricular activities. UIL programs are paid by public tax dollars. That includes homeschool and public parents. These dollars contribute to the school funding, including extracurricular activities. Being able to participate should not be limited to where a student learns. And I'm learning at home and my friends are learning at school. But when we participate in extracurricular activities together, it creates unity in our community. So letting us join would show that SAISD cares about all students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Matlock. Next, we have Chris Matlock.
If I'd had any more Matlocks, I'd have brought them, but. To the board administration, thank you again for this opportunity to share our concerns with each of you. I've met with a few of you individually before this and again, thank you for your time serving our community. Last week, I mentioned many of the ins and outs of SB 401. Tonight, I want to stress the opportunities that allowing this rule could provide. First, the school district will get fifteen hundred dollars per activity that each student participates in. For an activity like band, which has the capacity to support inclusion of many additional students, if just thirty students from the ninth through twelfth grade were to sign up and be chosen, that could mean an additional forty-five thousand dollars of funding that SAISD would receive. The band would be larger and also louder, which makes it even more impressive than it already is. Plus, the incremental costs of adding thirty students to the band is minimal as the policy for homeschool participation could require a fee that the, for the uniform if necessary. In saying this, the point is that the monetary disadvantages are negated by the details in the law and by the policy SAISD would adopt and get to make theirself. Second, this would give many more students in the school district the opportunity to the same programs as their peers, regardless of where they receive their curriculum from. UIL is an extracurricular activity organization. These activities are in addition to the academic education that the district provides. Because we all pay the same school property taxes, this formally aligns money paid with money spent and allows our families to incorporate these district activities into our curriculum. This also serves as a bridge to the district and I do fully believe that this will likely lead to enrollment by some high school students in the future. Third, the school district is here to provide and serve all students that live in the district. Just because these students do not currently attend your schools for their academic needs, that does not mean that they are not your students too. SAISD is a frontrunner in pushing forward with new technology and opportunities when they are presented. And I challenge the district to be a leader in this space too. Your local Texas congressman voted yes to SB 401 and it was overwhelmingly voted in favor of during the eighty-ninth legislative session. One hundred and four yeses to thirty-five noes in the House and twenty-five yeses to six noes in the Senate. And listening to the committee hearings and the floor sessions, it was obvious that the majority of the Texas Legislature views all students in their state as students who deserve access to the UIL activity system. I understand the concern that enrolled students might lose opportunities to those who are homeschooled. But it's disheartening to think that this fear is leading to missed chances for students like my son. By choosing to adopt SB 401, you're giving opportunities that could truly benefit them and potentially their enrolled peers. Please do not let the fear of the unknown, the fear of the what-if, or the fact that nobody within the district has had to deal with this situation before be the reasons that SAISD chooses not to participate. I will leave you with an inspirational quote from Dale Carnegie. Take a chance. All life is a chance. The man who goes farthest is generally the one who is willing to do and dare. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Matlock. Next, we have Mr. Virgil Pasetti regarding demolition and leadership.
Hello, my name is Virgil Pasetti, concerned father. I see on the agenda tonight that you have the demolition of San Jacinto in Austin on there. I'd like to say that we could have saved San Jacinto and we still never come out and said it wasn't the earthquake, even though we know it wasn't. But what amazes me is that for years, we knew there was a problem and didn't do anything. But we can demolish it in this amount of time. The reason it concerns me is that campus has a long history of ants, rats, termites, cats, bats, everything you can see. I've put it out there before. You're going to tear it down while you're running kindergarten or pre-K right next to it. And also right in the middle of a flood zone and across the street from a superfund site. And have any of y'all been to the dump? Because if you weren't impacted by the flood, you wouldn't know. But the last time I went, you couldn't even hardly get in. And now you're going to be taking up that precious area that we need to recover from the flood because you want to demolish it now. So please, when you consider this, consider what is that dust going to do to those kids that are right there? You're renting that, you're taking day elementary kids and putting them there? You know that's got lead-based paint in it. You know there's a superfund site across the street, so when you disturb that that soil, there's a chance. And you know there's all those insects there that y'all have been fighting for years. And now hopefully you won't do that during school and hopefully you won't do it in the middle of a flood recovery. So I just hope that you're not excited to tear something down because at least you can show you did something on time. But rather look at the community and say, is that what's best to do today? So please consider that. Those kids deserve better than that. They don't need to breathe that stuff, guys. They don't need to get attacked by all the ants and the rats and the termites that you're going to disturb. And those people that live around there that are still in shock because their house is flooded, they don't need the street shut down and they don't need the dump congested because you want to tear it down today. Leadership, eighty professionals short, thirty paraprofessionals short, thirty-eight maintenance and mechanics short. And that's on top of thirty or forty positions that we took away. I haven't seen anything on your website about this. You're about to flood our school with a bunch of uncertified permanent subs and you haven't told any of the parents about it. We have one of the highest-paid superintendents in the state of Texas. And I haven't seen him bring a suit. I haven't seen him bring a coach. I haven't seen him bring anybody. I've seen him run a bunch off. I hadn't seen him bring any in. You need to look at this. You're in an HR crisis right now and nobody out here knows about it. Please let us know what's going on and if you're going to be able to fill those seats.
Thank you, Mr. Pasetti. Next, we're going to move to item six and we're going to start with Dr. Brandon regarding a update on the sale of the 2025 bonds.
Dr. Keeman, Dr. Moran, members of the board. Just a quick update, a non-action item, just an update on the bond 2025, the sale of the bond. Give you an idea of, one of the things we were invited to see, the actual bond sale on the day, on the day of the sale. And this is just an example of the screen. As you can see, different investors from different areas as the bond is spread out over year one through year thirty and where those sales happen first. This was at about forty percent. The the bond selling out in the latter years first, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, all the way through thirty. This is a look at an idea of what industries were purchasing. Institutional money managers, bond fund, insurance, bank portfolios, across the board. You're able to identify and keep track of those sales as they happen. This was right toward the end where you see it ninety-nine percent. And then also by our underwriters, Piper Sandler, Samco, BOK, FHN, and Frost Bank. You can see where those, where they came in on that bottom right-hand corner. And so for the parameters set by the board before the sale, make sure that the max principal issued was not over three hundred ninety-seven million. True interest cost not over five point seven five percent. And then not past a final maturity date of February of fifty-five in that thirty-year note. And then you can see that the actual came in at a sell of three hundred eighty-five, just over three hundred eighty-five million at four point eight, just over four point eight percent. And then the same date on the sale of the bonds. Now, to kind of clear up, certainly it's like, well, if we had three hundred ninety-seven, why did we sell three hundred eighty-five? So I'll give you my best Jeff Robert take on that. I've spent some time with him. He couldn't be here tonight, but the, as you can see, the difference in on this screen, the yield versus the coupon and the example that he gave being insurance companies like to come in and buy bonds, I mean, it's guaranteed from the parent, permanent school fund. So low risk to investors. And those bonds, like in twenty twenty-seven, that yield at two point six five percent, they sell the coupon at five percent. And so they pay a premium to be able to buy that bond at that five percent. So we're able to sell only the three hundred ninety-seven million paying back at three hundred eighty-four million. So that extra on top of that, we do not have to pay interest on to put out for sale. So we collect those premiums, they do upfront for the sale of the bonds. But for example, if in industry, let's say an insurance company ten years from now had a hurricane and they had sustained heavy losses and they needed to back their funds out of the bond, it's much easier for them to go to market at five percent and find a buyer than it is at two point six. So those investors where you see will pay a premium upfront outside of the purchase price. And so we were able to sell three hundred ninety-seven million in bonds, only paying back at three hundred eighty-four. But the full amount, the three hundred ninety-seven that was sold will be what's wired to the district for the construction as part of the 2025 bond.
Can I ask a question real quick? Does that get us to the maximum hold harmless?
Yes. So the the state hold harmless, we maximize that by doing the full three hundred ninety-seven. The ratings still held. Fitch kept our rating at double A plus through that. And so it was still, certainly with the permanent school fund backing school district bonds, investors are still looking in that direction and it's a good, a good buy for them. But just like you mentioned, by being able to sell all three hundred ninety-seven million before and making a payment before September one, we're able to capitalize on saving the taxpayers approximately eighty million in interest in the paying back of those bonds. And then here's the projected payout. We'll finish paying off the two thousand eight bond in twenty thirty-four. And then all the proceeds then going, payments going to our 2025 bond. You can see that he, our financial advisor, had set a very conservative growth rate at half a percent. You can see that it was three point two-two percent in twenty-five, six point seven percent in twenty-six. So as we get into those years, as we continue to add business to San Angelo and we see a larger than half a percent growth rate, then the board would be able to drive down that INS rate for the taxpayers. That's what the board has done historically and that's what we hope for certainly in the future. Any questions?
Thank you for your work on that, Dr. Brandon. Any questions for Dr. Brandon? And thank you for the speed that we did this, getting this done. I know it was no small issue, but with the state legislature, having that hold harmless, that eighty million dollars is a big deal to this community. So thank you for getting that done and pass that on to Mr. Roberts as well.
And also thank you, Merle and Dr. Moran, for keeping us in the loop by those were being sold. I was on a tractor and I went, oh, look. So yeah, thank you for letting us know.
All right, next, we have another information item. It's on Bond Oversight Committee and Dr. Moran is going to help us with that.
Sure. As the board knows, we've been talking about just our goal to be transparent, build trust, and manage our bond funds responsibly. So we've set up a citizens' bond oversight committee. We will be sending invitations to these individuals. We'll start with a facility advisory committee. There'll be some others that will be involved as well that have been instrumental in supporting this effort. But essentially, it's all about being transparent, accountable. And we'll meet at least four times a year. There'll probably be some special meetings where there will be walking tours available for those individuals. But the goal is to dispel any misunderstandings and misconceptions during the bond process and make sure that we are being fully transparent, make sure that we are able to present information to our citizens and gain feedback from them. So those will be going out. We've got four dates already selected. The list of invitees is being developed and finalized.
Any questions for Dr. Moran regarding the Bond Oversight Committee?
When will those meetings begin?
The first one is scheduled in October. We, I hesitate to announce the dates yet because we're still finalizing. But October would be the first date.
Any other questions? All right, next, next information item is an update from Dr. Gomez. It's our academic update for today.
Dr. Keeman, Dr. Moran, and members of the board. This evening, we're going to give an academic update around the end-of-year star achievement results and the end-of-year star and of course, achievement results. Now, we know you all as a board team have recently attended training. And so I'm stressing the word achievement because you know when we're talking accountability in the state, achievement is one component. When we talk about our board goals, we talk about growth. So the data that we're sharing at this time is simply the achievement data. It's really important that we distinguish the two since both achievement and growth feed into the state's accountability system. And we're committed to seeing that every student grows when they're in our district. But for tonight's purposes, this data is around achievement. So also, before I get in this really deep, you all are very well informed of the lawsuit that the state underwent with multiple districts. And so ratings were held. We gave you an update in April when that was overturned. And just a couple of weeks ago in July, the Court of Appeals overturned the twenty-three, twenty-four ratings. Sorry, it gets a little confusing when you start talking all of these. TA is not released when those ratings will be out. We will continue to update. But TA continues to report that the twenty-four, twenty-five school year ratings will be released August fifteenth. So just kind of some dates. It's important that we understand that because we've had this data and we knew points where we needed to focus, align, really look at instructional resources. So with new information, that's a little delayed. It doesn't change the action that we've taken place. And actually, if some of the information comes out, it'll be a moot point because we have new data that shows the growth that our campuses are making. Okay? But to begin, we will talk specifically. But to begin, we will talk specifically grades three through eight with reading language arts or reading. What's important to keep in mind there, it's referred to as reading, but that encompasses writing. So please know it is not just simply a reading assessment. You can see on the right-hand side of the slide, the 2024 achievement scores. And then on the left side, the most recent 2025 achievement scores. The way the state distinguishes data is the first column. So I'll specify in the 25 column for third grade. That 74 is the percent of students reaching approaches. Approaches is meeting the standard on the state assessment. The next column is meets, and the very last column is masters. So just so you know the label of each column. So you can compare from spring of '25 to spring of '24 and see in third grade, '25 was 74 as compared to '71 and '24, approaching fourth grade, 80 as compared to 78. I highlight those specifically and we'll pause just a minute because we've had such lengthy conversations around instructional materials. And we had a very specific rollout of instructional materials. And we began that in '23-24. And we first started with K through 2 because our data showed that students were coming in well below grade level. It's not as simple as it may sound to just simply align and change all resources from teachers in one big swoop. So we had a very structured rollout that first began in '23-24 with K 2. It continued in '24-25, all the way from K 5. And now, as you all adopted this spring, we're aligned all the way through elementary, K 5. And RLA, we're now aligned. And that's only because the secondary option is not out. So I just want to also give that disclaimer. And then in math, we're now aligned all the way from kindergarten through Algebra I. So just keep that in mind as we talk about different cohorts of students. Then in fifth grade, you can see spring of '25, 67% as compared to 70% in '24. Sixth grade remained the same. Seventh grade remained the same. Eighth grade, 71 in spring of '25, 69 spring of 2024. And then the English I and English II. As we know, these assessments increase in difficulty and rigor in our requirement for graduation. So we have in spring of '25, 56 as compared to '24. And, excuse me, as compared to 59 in spring of '24. And then in English II, 63 as compared to 66. So I'm going to pause just a second. Are there any questions specific to the RLA at this time?
I just want to make sure, there's been a lot made about COVID, et cetera, but I just want to make sure I have it right. The fifth graders in this cohort would have been kindergartners during COVID? And the English I would have been third graders, correct?
Yes, sir. Okay, I'm going to move to math. So it's set up the exact same way with '25 and '24 on the left and the right. Approaches, meets, and masters. As a reminder, math instructional resources, it was beginning with this school year, the '24-25, where new resources were aligned district-wide in grades three through five. K through 2, due to the great amount of learning that they had in the area of RLA, those new resources will not take effect until the '25-26 school year. And while both core content areas are super important, the need for strong literacy skills impacts every content area. So you can compare across and see third grade remained the same. Fourth grade, 63 and 59. Fifth grade, 62 and 65. And we've had a lot of conversations about middle school. And I know that Ms. Duncan knows this well. With the grade bands and new expectations, student expectations from the state, they jump quite a bit at that level. So you can see sixth grade this spring, 64 as compared to 57. Seventh grade, 45 as compared to 48. Eighth grade, 59 as compared to 57. And then Algebra I. So I want to pause just a minute because we've given multiple updates about Algebra I this year over the course of the year. Again, we've had data and we knew we needed changes. So when you talk about a particular area of teachers for our district, Algebra I is also in eighth grade. The students that take Algebra I in eighth grade are advanced. Our concern from a district level is when we look at students that take Algebra I as ninth graders. Algebra I is a huge point for students in all of their mathematical courses. It's foundational. So they need a strong understanding. This year alone, we had nine new teachers in Algebra I out of the 12. So we knew we had to have a very structured resource to support that number of new teachers. Some of those teachers did follow a traditional university-based path. Others were alternative certified. So while we do see a difference in spring of '24 and spring of '25 with the number of teachers, and again, this is achievement only, we did see over the national norm referenced map assessment, great growth from our students. So I just wanted to clarify what we were reporting in regards to Algebra I over the course of the year because that was a different assessment. And we all know that the teacher is the closest impact to student outcomes of any individual. And so it's our responsibility to thoroughly support our teachers. And I'll pause just a minute to see if you have any specific questions about math.
Vera, I don't have questions, but I just want to make a few comments to clarify in case people are listening. And that when you look at data, it's a big picture. And even when we're comparing data. But with that said, we need to understand that it's a different group of kids. Even though it's a state-written test, the test is different. So the test in '24 may not be like the test in '25.
It's not. You're exactly right.
It still covers the TEES. And back, way back in the Madeline Hunter days, when she dissected the test and she would take every year. I mean, there are years when, there's a couple of questions on there that us as teachers were like, we don't even know. So we can compare data, but we always need to keep that in mind that it's different kids. It's a different, it's the same state test, but the questions are totally different. And some years, there's just some tricky dang questions on there. And also for anyone listening, when we look at that third category of mastery, mastery is hard to get. For people out there listening, in a test of 53 questions, to get mastery, sometimes you can only miss four. That's almost perfection. And so that number, I feel like mastery will always be a little bit low just because to score a perfect score. And there are children that score mastery one year and maybe not the next in the difference of one question. So I just wanted to point that out, that mastery is tough. And for people that don't know, and I'm not a reading person, but I do know in math, sometimes it's you can miss three, you can miss four, depending on what the state cutoff is. So that's something to think of that. And just when we look at data, we have to be very open-minded that sometimes, I mean, I taught seventh grade and there were years, now, I didn't read the test, that's against the law. But after it's released, I would read the seventh grade test and go, you know what, those were okay. And then the next year, go, wow, they hit us hard. So it's, it's so many different elements in this that we, when we look at it, we have to be very open-minded. Thank you, Vera.
Okay.
I have a question. Sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a goal percentage that you all are shooting for, us as a district, each year for each category?
Yes. And so specific to, we're going to discuss the superintendent board goals later this evening. And when I began, I talked specifically about this as achievement. So achievement is one component. So a student that comes in maybe real high academically, we want that student to grow at least a full year, just like we want a student who is striving and has a lot of gaps that we need to accelerate and remediate. So we set our goals specific to growth, which is the other domain of the assessment data, but that has not been released for '25. So this evening, we can only discuss the achievement data. Great question. When we move on to our other areas, we have science for fifth grade, eighth grade, and biology. And as a reminder, these grades were added to the district's teacher incentive allotment plan, which takes effect starting this school year. Also, it's a reminder, science was part of your final last adoptions in spring of '24. So all science teachers in the district got new instructional resources that they began implementation of this school year. And all their professional learning was around those resources. So in spring of '24, you can see fifth grade. Also, there's new science TEES in there. So when Ms. Duncan talks about things changing, that impacts new TEES, new assessment, all the things, and new instructional resources. Spring of '24, 50 as compared to 53. And spring of '25, eighth grade, 55 as compared to 62% approaches. And spring of '25, biology, and of course, 86 as compared to 87. And biology is one of those required end-of-course assessments. In the area of social studies, the state has not released instructional resources. And we're well beyond the seven years. When we used to think of traditional seven-year adoptions, we well exceeded that. So it's also just a reminder here that eighth grade and U.S. history were also added to the district's teacher incentive allotment. And we did purchase new instructional resources for six through eight social studies, eighth grade and U.S. history because they have been in need of instructional resources. We also purchased instructional resources for elementary. We think, have to think about the human capacity for change. But our elementary teachers have not had new instructional resources for social studies in a number of years. They too are getting two instructional resources, which we trained on in Learning Palooza last week for elementary. So you can see 24 for eighth grade as compared to 25. Again, we knew we needed to provide them support. If anyone hasn't looked at the eighth grade release test, the latest one available, and you just want something to do, I encourage anyone just to pull it up on TA and try to take it. Of all the content areas, that grade level and content area covers the most expansive amount of TEES. It is a lot of information. Talk to any eighth grade social studies teacher. And you never know, Ms. Duncan, on that one, what's going to be tested from year to year. And then U.S. history, 94 in spring of '24 as compared to 92 in spring of '25. That's another required EOC. I'll pause. Any questions about science or social studies?
Again, Vera, I want to comment on, I'm glad that you talked about eighth grade and U.S. history. And tell me if I'm right, if I remember this correctly, eighth grade U.S. history covers the beginning, founding fathers until a certain day.
Correct.
And then U.S. is from that day on. And if anyone has ever tried to teach the founding, I mean, it's so abstract to these children. You're teaching an eighth grader about before America was America and about these presidents they've never. And as we keep growing as a nation and that expands, you know, we're adding on to the U.S., the eighth grade stays the same. So eighth grade is just a challenge because we're, we're teaching a story. History is a story to children that they don't even know these people. So I just wanted to say, I, I see that and I agree with that. And, and I think that might be some of the, both are amazing, but the difference, somebody may say, well, wow, 45 and 92. Well, you're teaching eighth grade, you're teaching high school. Eighth graders, you're teaching people they don't know. U.S. history, you're teaching the presidents that they have lived through and the things that are happening in the world. So it is very challenging and history is, you know, some people say you can't have a future without the past. That's what a history teacher, their quote is, and it's so true. But try telling an eighth grader that many, many years ago was important today. It is challenging.
I know that you're aware. It's just a reminder for all of those listening. If you do not have an eighth grader or haven't had an eighth grader in a long time, I know that Mr. Columbot, Dr. Self, and I have this conversation all the time. Eighth grade is also the one grade level that tests in every content area. So imagine an eighth grader taking reading, taking math, taking science, and taking social studies. And that's what our eighth graders are expected to do. And Mr. Columbot can tell you a lot of stories about the history classes. I'd also like to commend our social studies teachers, our instructional coach, Stephanie Duncan, that works specifically to support social studies. They have been working June and July beyond Learning Palooza last week on the new resources and internalization. So while I said specifically this was primarily for end of course and STAR, I think it's very important that we circle back to our earliest learners. In our reports, I'm always sharing with you students entering the district. So we've had multiple conversations about students that enter SAISD and kindergarten being well below grade level. So I wanted to wrap up with data specifically around those earliest learners because we know the earlier we close gaps and needed skills, the more quickly we can get them on grade level and beyond. So in the beginning of the year, I reported to you that in kindergarten, our district had 53% of students entering well below. Okay? Now, the way Elm Class Dibbles breaks up the assessment is well below, below, at, or above. But specifically, well below was 53%. So we're ending the year with 31% of kindergartners at well below. So you can see the decrease in that percentage. And then again, keep comparing to the state and the national average. In first grade, well below entering the district is 40% as compared to 26%. End of year, in second grade, beginning of year, well below 34% as compared to 27%. So we want you to know, we don't just look at the state assessment data. We look at multiple data points to form interventions, to create schedules, and to provide acceleration for students in need.
Dr. Gomez, either in a Friday Facts or just when we're talking to constituents, do you mind giving us the K through 2, beginning of year and end of year in our Friday Facts? Just so we have the both data points looking at each other?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And then in closing, in data, because I couldn't agree more with a statement that was made earlier about the importance of mathematical fluency. We agree that mathematical fluency for that automaticity is essential for our learners. While as educators, we are bound to teach the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills as written for each grade level. We don't simply do the core curriculum and don't worry about the automaticity of mathematical facts. We also address what we all knew as flashcards and math facts. Maybe when you went to school or when children that have already gone through the system went to school. So this chart has a lot of numbers. I'm going to flip over to the graph version and give you an example. So what is-
Real quick, just for people watching. No, you're good on that one. BOY is beginning of year.
Yes.
And EOI is end of year. Just, I know everyone knows that, but just reminder.
Yes, I apologize. I know better to explain those acronyms. So thank you for that reminder. So what Reflex Math is, it's an adaptive system for elementary students to build that automatic recall of basic math facts. I mean, you might have fond memories of playing around the world as an elementary student. Maybe they were fond. If you remained in the game, maybe you didn't care for it so much if you got out early. But you can equate that to the same type of thing. It's adaptive. Addition, subtraction is where you- Addition, subtraction is where you begin. It's really intended for 2nd grade through 5th grade. We, this year, did start with 1st grade at semester, just so you have some context. So what you want is, in the beginning of the year, where you see that high percentage in red, and they're at the 0 to 49% fluency, we want to see them shifting to the green. Okay? Because that means it's more automatic, they're able to move through their facts quicker. And so this just kind of breaks it down for you for all grade levels from BOY to EOI. Just think that the colors make a great statement. You can see that every student wasn't assessed, there were some that were still assessing. I think that's a good visual, and also shows our commitment, because that automaticity really impacts the more complex skills as students advance on up in the grades. But moving back to this graph, it shows all, so by all, it means every student assessed from 1st grade through 5th grade. And then you can see, again, remember, we want to see that 0 to 49% fluent number decreasing. You want, and you want it to decrease because you want them to move up in the fluency level. The higher they are in the fluency level, the more automatic the recall of those math skills are. So I also just wanted to show you that, while no reflex is not our core curriculum, it's meant to be a short amount of time, 10 to 15 minutes is optimal. So this is not our math instruction, please know that, but it is important that we are supporting students in that numerical fluency. So circling back to how I started this evening, we know that there's been some ups and downs with the Texas Education Agency and release of ratings, but we've had the achievement data and the growth data despite the hold from TA on the A through F ratings. At this time, we're still awaiting our full growth data for '25. So regardless, it's just kind of that reminder, like, we don't wait for what the state tells us on your X letter. We look at the data to know our needs, so we can schedule and provide appropriate supports. But in transparency, it's important that we state, while we're behind a little bit from the state having the delays, in June, this past June, the district did receive a letter from the Texas Education Agency based on the '22, '23 ratings about three of our schools being in need of intervention. We already knew that, already been working on a plan, which in a second, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Self and Mr. Columbok to share more. Those schools specifically were McGill, Goliad, and Holloman. We feel quite confident, whenever the Texas Education Agency does release the '24 ratings, that will be a moot point. So we, what we want the board to know, and what we want the community to know, is we look at each individual student and their needs, whether they need to be pushed for acceleration to go beyond grade level, or they're well below and we need to move them up. So I think it's really important that we talk about the action steps, because Ms. Duncan, earlier, you referred to, you can look at data to tell any story. For us, looking at data to form immediate, bite-sized action steps that we can put in place for our students and our families is what's most important. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Self, our Executive Director of Elementary School Leadership.
Good evening, Dr. Keeman, Dr. Moran, and members of the board. I couldn't have said it more eloquently, that data drives and informs our next steps, and we're going to be talking through two specific pathways with you this evening, and that is through the lens of intentional professional learning that we offer our instructional leaders and our teachers, as well as our coaching systems. So I think it's important to talk through our journey the past three years, give you a pretty high-level overview, and talk about where we're going. It's been a three-year journey, for sure, when you're thinking through the lens of professional learning, just like in your very own professions. You know, you are professionals in your own industries. You have continuing education, you are learning about new research and practices. It's no different for our educators as well, and what research tells us where we need to go to get the student outcomes that we desire. So again, it's been a three-year process. We started the roadmap with recalibrating our professional learning communities, and we spent quite a good bit of time doing that at both elementary and secondary levels. We then transitioned into revamping our district's informal walkthrough form. That is not the formal T-Test observation form, that is the informal. And where Dr. Gomez referenced, that bite-sized feedback, that is where it comes into play. Really and truly, your informal walkthroughs are where you're going to evoke change, because just like in a classroom with a teacher and students, the teachers intercede at the point of error, so that students don't continue practices or develop habits that are counterintuitive to their goals. And it's just like us as instructional leaders on campuses, we're doing the same thing for our teachers. So we're providing that bite-sized action step through our informal walkthroughs. We spend a great deal of time training our instructional leaders on that, and we're continuing the work in that area as well. We're adding a dimension, a T-Test dimension on that walkthrough that we're going to launch with the fall semester. We are also requiring, if you are a teacher and you teach the core content area of reading or math, it is a requirement that you engage in research-based instructional strategies professional learning with our great partners at Region 15. That professional learning comes alongside our high-quality instructional materials, and really and truly amplifies all of the research and science behind reading and math. So that has been a non-negotiable for our teachers, as well as our instructional leaders. Even our cabinet members have attended that professional learning, so, and that's actually a really great segue into our culture of growth. And that's through building our coaching models and systems. Over the past three years, we have spent a great deal of time in that area, because we want to build capacity in our leaders. And when we do that, we in turn build capacity in our teachers and their efficacy. We're putting tools in their toolbox, so that they're successful and they feel successful, because that is a significant outcome on student success. We have also worked through the lens of our community-based accountability through our essential questions. We now have a method and ways to measure data points of systems on our campuses. So every quarter, Mr. Columbok and I have conversations with principals based on data. So just like Ms. Duncan mentioned, it's really important to look at data, it drives your next steps, but I think it's very important to note that it doesn't always need to be terminal data. That's your autopsy data. You need to be looking at real-time data. How many times are we in the classroom? How many times are we having coaching conversations with teachers? How many action steps are we assigning a teacher? Because when we go to look at end-of-year map growth data, and we see an outlier, we can actually have a conversation with that teacher, with that campus leader, and get to the root cause of maybe why that happened. So we now have some really great systems in place on campuses to measure those outcomes. So those are two particular pathways. I could visit with you about it all night, I will refrain from doing that, but I'm happy to entertain any questions if you have those for me.
These percentages, is there a breakdown at each campus yet?
Yes, ma'am. For our quarterly evidence review meetings, yes, it's by quarter. And so those are the coaching conversations that we have with our principals, and just kind of, it gauges like where we're going. Are we going in the right direction? Are we growing at the pace that we want to? Are our numbers, our percentages, matching our student outcomes? And if not, we've got to figure out why. So we actually have a way to look at that now.
Are we able to view those breakdowns, those percentages per campus?
Yes. Absolutely. We'll get them to you.
So Mr. Columbok is taking one for the team, because he's going to be up here for quite a while talking about the code of conduct, but just before we close, do you have any question pertaining to elementary or secondary that any of the three of us can help answer?
Here I am again. I just, I want to say thank you for the work that you're doing, because teaching and schools have changed so drastically in the past 30 years. I'm old. And now, it's more of a team. That going into a class, a teacher's classroom, a teacher used to get nervous and thought they were being watched, but now it's help. And I know our teachers are feeling that way, they're feeling supported, and, you know, they're helping each other, the administration is going in, y'all are going in, and that takes a lot of time, because when you're in a classroom helping a teacher, all the other things that need to be done, it's a huge juggling act right now. So I want to thank the administrator, the coaches, teachers helping teachers, it's a big family, and we all have to work together, support each other. We're never looking to get anybody, we want, like you said, to grow, to learn from one another, and to do what's best for kids. So thank you.
Dr. Gomez, I just want to thank you and your team. It's been mentioned, but really, a lot of this work started three years ago with high quality instructional materials, and a continuation of that over the last two to three years, even the last six months. And the fact that although the grade was released in, from three, two years, three years ago, in the end of April, the fact that we have made the changes, I am optimistic when we see our growth based on what our MAP data is, et cetera, that our '24 and ' '25 data will look better. And when we get to district goals down here at the very end of the meeting, it'll be clear to our community that we expect better, and that, but we think we are moving in the right direction. I just want to thank you and your team for all the work y'all have done, because you've taken a lot of arrows in getting some of that done, and I just want to thank you again for all your hard work in that.
Well, thank you. It's unfortunate that it's not a shortage just in San Angelo ISD or the state of Texas, it's a national shortage. So vacancy numbers are not unique to our district. We don't believe in just filling a slot to fill a slot, and we are committed to building and growing teachers and instructional leaders. So a great shout-out to Dr. Self, Mr. Columbok, our CNI team, our principals, but most importantly, our teachers.
Thank you. All right. We're going to move forward with consent items, which is item seven. Our agenda is consent items A through D. We have donations, we have our minutes from our June 2nd, June 9th, and June 16th meetings. We have bid 25-7, which is athletic equipment, and the board meeting and dates, meeting dates and activities that were all discussed at our pre-agenda meeting. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding our consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Move for approval of the consent agenda?
I'll second.
I have a motion from Mr. Dindel, and a second from Mr. Gallegos. Any further board comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes 7-0. Next, our action items. I'm going to take some privilege, and we're going to move action item L to first, and we're going to consider Senate Bill 401, non-enrolled student participation in UIL activities, since we have a family sitting here to hear about that, and so, no reason to make them sit through everything else.
I think, Dr. Moran, you're going to do that for us.
Yeah, I've got it. So the board's heard from, you've heard information over the course of the last month on this through Friday Facts. You've also heard conversation last week at the meeting. There's a number of arguments to be made for and against this. Historically, you've heard that we have not, as a district, allowed non-enrolled students to participate in UIL activities. The majority of schools around the state do not allow it. Some of the arguments made against it is that for those students that are not enrolled that participate, they could bump students that are currently enrolled in school from a team. I know it can be argued either way, but that's the overarching argument against the participation. Also, there's a concern among some school districts that it could incentivize withdrawal to homeschool, albeit, I don't know that that would be an issue for us, and I'm certainly not making that a case tonight. After lengthy discussion among our staff, the administration recommends the board adopt a policy declining to grant non-enrolled students the opportunity to participate in league activities, which is the current practice in the district. Be glad to answer any questions.
Questions or comments for Dr. Moran?
Dr. Moran, like, if, he has it right here, speaking to my microphone. For like, homeschool students, is there any way, if we were to allow them to participate, is there any way that we could come up, or we would be allowed to set up a rubric or anything, to where we could keep an eye on their testing and make sure that they are being kept up to date? Well, that's one of the requirements. There's certain requirements that must be met. No pass, no play is still effective for those students in those districts. And I've reviewed a number of districts' guidelines. I mean, there's, it's not something that we would have to necessarily create, it already exists, we just have to tailor it for our district if the board chose to do that.
Okay. I'd like to know, as a district, what the reasoning is that you would advise us to not move forward with it?
Well, it's pretty-
Just us as a district?
Yeah, it's just pretty simple. The belief that if you've got 15 kids on a basketball team at the high school, and you allow non-enrolled students to participate, would those students currently in our district, currently on those teams, lose a spot? That's one argument to be made against allowing it. And then the other is the incentive, or the incentivization of, would this cause people that are currently enrolled to withdraw to homeschool so that their kids could still participate? Again, I don't believe that to be something that we would have to contend with. I don't think people would do that, honestly, but maybe a few would, who knows? But, so again, I mean, it's one of those things, historically, the district has had the position, years ago, we could have opted in and allowed it, and the district chose not to do that. And so, we're at a place where we just, the majority of the folks that are providing input on this would recommend that we not do that.
So the majority of folks that you're mentioning, who are those?
These are coaches, sponsors, administrators, you know, typically the people that would weigh in on any participation in those extracurricular activities.
So ultimately, it's just the fact of a possibility that a homeschool student could take the spot of an enrolled student trying out?
I think that's one of the main arguments that they are making when I asked them the question. Philosophically, right or wrong, it's just the opinion of the people that manage those programs and campuses, they feel like it'd be a mistake to do that.
I wanted to ask if, and I understand no pass, no play is still in effect, but is there a way to compare curriculum between the homeschool curriculum and the public school curriculum to make sure that they're comparable?
I mean, I'm sure you could, I don't think it's worth the time, to be honest with you.
I'm sorry, I meant, I meant, would we do that? Like, do districts that are-
They don't necessarily audit the homeschool curriculum.
So there's not a way-
As long as it's an acceptable curriculum that is approved by the district, and the parent has the right to offer whatever curriculum they so choose, and the parent assigns the grade to the student. And I think, in defense of homeschool parents, I think homeschool- And I think, in defense of homeschool parents, I think homeschool parents, many of them do it well and do it right. We have, if, if I were generalizing, I would say the majority of the secondary kids who withdraw to homeschool are not doing it right. Typically, you'll see homeschool families start their children young, and they do it well and do it right. And there's a lot of respect for that. So, in response to your question, I don't think we would, we wouldn't audit necessarily. We would have to, to know what they're, what they're teaching, what the grades are, to make sure they met all the qualifications and prerequisites that UIL expects.
Quick question that I think you kind of talked about a little bit, but there would be, you could be able, you could put stipulations in there that you cannot withdraw from the school and then immediately participate in the UIL.
Yeah, and that's actually in the provision that you can't just bounce around and drop out, come back, and drop out, and come back. You can't do that.
Further questions or comments?
My, my comment is, we have to remember that this is for all extracurricular, debate, band, orchestra, speech, everything. And some of those classes are throughout the day. So, a student that's not enrolled doesn't have, will be coming on campus and leaving campus. So, we've talked a lot about the sports, but it's, when you open this up, it's everything, everything that's extracurricular. Because you, we can't say yes to some one thing and no to something else. Am I correct on that?
Right. I mean, I think if we, as a district, decided to do this, it would need to be an all or nothing thing. You wouldn't want to open it for athletics and not for final.
Right.
So, it's not an acceptable route. And I would suggest that the districts who have done this, even the larger districts, it's not, it's not a tidal wave of people. It's a, it's relatively small number of people that engage in it. But I know that Abilene to our north allows it. And there, there may be a few others that I'm not aware near, but most districts in the area do not. In East Texas, there were a few that did. And they had very small numbers of kids that, that chose to participate.
I don't know. I think this is a difficult thing because I, I feel for the homeschool parents, obviously, that are wanting to give their children all those experiences. I also worry about the fact that, at least eight years I've been on the school board, that all we've been hearing about is graduation rates and, and success in school. There's a significant improvement in that in children who are in extracurriculars. And so, when we, as a board, are responsible for the students in our district as far as their growth and their achievement, and we are held to a standard regarding that, losing a feather or a carrot for growth and for students to be enrolled and engaged in our secondary schools, that concerns me. I get that that's not going to be a lot of kids, but losing one or two kids that were in our, in our system and then not figuring out a way to get those students engaged because we're engaging students that aren't in our system, which we're not responsible for, for their growth and achievement, that concerns me. That doesn't mean that I don't think that we should continue to evaluate it and see how this goes. And there may be systems that work in the future, but that's my concern with it at the moment is that one or two, those one or two kids that we're responsible for making sure that they achieve, although it's only one or two kids, it's only one or two kids coming in too, but it's, those are the ones that are our responsibility, that their parents have entrusted us to make sure that they reach that achievement. So, that's my issue with it.
Dr. Kingman, I want to commend the, the Matlock family for speaking in force to us today. There's a positive role model at home, and you can see that. And so, in saying that, I know that some of these kids that are coming to school right now don't have that support that are, that are in our system right now, that don't have that support. But really, the only thing that keeps them coming to school are some of these spots on some of these teams that have limited numbers. So, moving forward, that, that concerns me. And I, I know that Mr. Matlock and I have talked previous too, and I appreciate that. And I would encourage him that, that maybe continuing his efforts at home while, while enrolling his kids in public school might be a great option moving forward also. So.
Yeah, I, I hear what you, I hear the arguments you are making as far as potential displacements of our children. I do think we have, obviously, an important role for the children that are enrolled in our district. But I do think as a, as a greater service for the public, we also have a role for the entire community in San Angelo, including the children that are homeschooled. We are the public school system here, and, you know, we should be helping those kids as well, as much as I, I think, and I think we all think that we do a great job with academics as well. And we would encourage all kids to be enrolled in the district. I also think that, you know, we have a responsibility as a school district to be there for all students, whether enrolled or not. If all that they're willing to give us is UIL participation, those are, that's also ways that we can help kids. And I think saying, these are our kids and those are not our kids, and I understand what you're saying because we're getting looked at and we're trying to better our scores and we're trying to get kids enrolled in our districts where they want to be, and that's important too. But saying someone because they're enrolled in our district is, is our kid, and because someone lives in our district but is not enrolled are not our children, I don't know that. I just, I feel like we have a greater responsibility for all children. If all we can get is a little bit in the UIL, I don't, I don't see why you would purposely exclude them because of potential fears of displacement. I know we, we brought up the question at the pre-agenda about this is a temporary, it's not a temporary thing, but theoretically, if things were to go poorly or something, unintended consequences, this is a, we could always opt in, opt out next year. And obviously, we don't want to be flipping and flopping for the community. But, you know, if potentially there are things that we don't foresee, or if some of the things that even that we do foresee are worse than we thought, I, I feel like there's opportunities that you could always, you could always opt out in the future. So, that's just my kind of, my thoughts on it.
And I'd like to remind the board that the law currently says if the board takes no action, then that means that non-enrolled students are allowed to participate.
Correct.
So, by taking any action, if you took action tonight, it would be to opt out and not allow those students to participate. So, I just want to make sure we're all clear on the opt-out, opt-in language.
Correct.
But by taking no, no action, you would essentially be following the current law, which allows non-enrolled students to participate.
All right. That being said, do I have a motion regarding an opt-out of the current SB 401? Do I have a, so there'll be no motion? If there's no motion, then there'll be no second? So.
I'll make the motion to opt out.
So, Mr. Gallegos makes the motion to opt out of-
Can I make one more comment?
Yes.
I think this would be an awesome opportunity for SISD to try something new. We have not tried it. Why wouldn't we be open to the idea of trying it? We don't know how great it could be. You know, like Dr. Mills said, this isn't, we, we are, we are, our duty here is to serve all kids, and I don't think there's going to be a long line out the door. This could be something great. Also, have we tried to reach out to surrounding districts that, you know, are utilizing this? And, and how has it worked to their benefit or against? I just, I think this is a, a great opportunity, and if y'all are anything like me, if the reason being, you know, somebody could take my spot, man, I'm competitive, and I'm going to go next year. I'm going to work all summer long, and I'm going to come back, and I'm not going to let that person take my spot. This is a, this is a good opportunity for the kids to learn something new.
Yeah. So, real quick, is there a second regarding opting out of Senate Bill 401?
A second.
Okay. So, there's a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Ms. Mizel Flynn, ladies first. And we're going to just go down the line because it's probably not going to be, and I think actually legally we have to do that. And for this one. And it'll be a yay or nay. So, any other board comments or questions before we make the vote?
If I can just say, I, I think it's very frustrating to board members across the state that the legislature has put this, put us in this situation. I think it's, it's unfair to boards who fight to advocate for their school districts to essentially have to fight against our, our, our ki, I mean, I'm like Carla. I think all kids are our kids. But at the end of the day, as a board member and as a parent of three SISD graduates and one still in school, I feel like it's, it's my job as a board member to advocate for the district. And to me, advocating for the district is, is giving the most opportunity to our kids.
I, I have a question. When we vote yes or no, whatever, is it for the year? Can you come back in December and change, or is it the year? Like twenty-five to twenty-six?
Well, that's a good question. You're voting for the year.
The year.
According to, according to the law.
But anything can be put on the agenda by board members at any time if there was-
If, if there needed to be discussion and the board wanted to discuss, that could, that could be on the agenda. But you're voting for the school year.
Okay. And we, we could, and I'm only saying that because, you know, you're, the, the people that are involved are the coaches and the, the coaches across the thing. And, and I think, you know, you're, you're saying that you've talked to them and, and they're not for it, if I heard you right. So, you know, I want to support them, but I also, I will say, we'll spend the next month talking and, and just finding out the pros and the cons. Because I don't know that right now. I don't know, I'm not a coach, so, and I don't want to put more on their plate than they already have because they have a lot on their plate right now. So, I'm just, I'm going to, I'm just throwing that out there. That's how, what I'm going to do.
Well, what I would ask you to do, and just remember your board operating procedures when it comes to board members and their interaction with staff, and let's make sure that we do it right so we don't create bigger issues in the community.
I'm sorry. I, I will. I just, I, I guess I just wasn't, I mean, I haven't had a whole lot of time to ponder this. I'm, I've only been here for a year or so, so it wasn't when this happened.
And I might just add to Ms. Mizel Flynn's comment. You know, the board opened it up for districts that wanted to opt in, and some districts did, some didn't. And this is, this is, I think, a disappointing way to force school boards around the state to, not to have the option to opt in, but to force them to opt out.
I agree.
And it's creating a problem. Because if boards wanted to do it, they could do it before tonight. But now, here we are at this crossroads where you all, as individual members, feel pressured to vote against something rather than to vote for something.
So, just to clarify, because I want to make sure we get this right. So, the motion that was made by-
I can read.
Well, I just want, I think the motion by Mr. Gallegos and second by Ms. Mizel Flynn is to opt out of allowing homeschool students to participate in UIL activities. So, a yay would be to opt out, not to opt in, just so we're all on the same page when we go through this. I don't want anyone's vote to be, so, we, because by default, we all, we are opted in. Okay? So, a yay would be to opt out, and a no would be to opt in. Or to, yes, that's correct. Just want to make sure I have it correct before, before we record the votes. Any other board comments or questions?
I guess a quick question. Do we have to opt out every single year?
That's a good question. I'll find the answer to that. I don't think so. I don't think so, but I'll check on that.
All right.
One more thing. So, I just want to be clear. Is there something that I'm missing here? Do you all know something that I don't, the, the ones who are wanting to opt out? And if so, I need that information because I'm, I'm really not understanding why you're wanting to opt out, other than taking a spot from, possibly taking a spot, not even, it's not even a hundred percent guarantee. Other than that, what's, I'm not, I'm not understanding what the, the deal is.
I speak to school board members across the state on a fairly regular basis. I've been involved in a lot of different advocacy groups. And, and the feeling across the state is that, that, you know, our kids, our, just our enrolled kids should have the first opportunity to participate. They're the ones that are around each other every day. They're the ones that participate in the entire day of the district, the entire academic day. And it's, and I know that Dr. Kingman said that, you know, or Dr. Moran said that, you know, that there are, there are homeschool parents, and I, obviously, the Matlocks are, are some of them that do homeschool well. But the overall, the overarching opinion is that it's, it's not the same rigor when there are kids who, at homeschool, can finish their academics in three or four hours and then can go and be coached or go out and practice their sport, or their instrument, or their ballet, or, you know, whatever the UIL sport is. And, and then there are the kids who are enrolled, and they are required to be in school for seventy-six thousand minutes a year. And then, after those seventy-six thousand minutes, then they have to find time to do their lessons and do extra rehearsals and do all that practice. It's, it's not a fair playing field. That's, that's the opinion of a lot of school board members across the state, and that's my opinion as well.
I think that's a, that's a great point. But do you think our enrolled students could gain from some of that? Do you think those homeschool kids that bring in some of that experience, some of those, you know, extra time, whatever, they have to devote to the craft, could they not bring that to the UIL activity and not just strengthen what we have? It's open to anybody, but, but you, you made the point.
I mean, my, my personal feeling to that is that, you know, my kids participate in activities across our community and interact with homeschool students in other areas too, and grow from, from their experiences and grow from, from being friends with, you know, kids that are not just in private, in public school. But I think, I personally feel like kids, yes, they can grow, but I don't think that we have to bring homeschool students into UIL sports and public schools to make that happen.
Ms. Mizel Flynn and Ms. Gardinas, in addition to potentially taking a spot, Ms. Mizel Flynn, you referenced the attendance requirement for minutes. Another point that coaches, sponsors, and administrators have brought up is our public school students are required to go compete whatever time they get back in the evening, no matter the hour, they're required to be in class the next morning. Where homeschool students have a much more flexible schedule, and they might start, start their studies the next day, ten, eleven, whatever time is on their schedule. But it's a very different schedule than the students enrolled in public education. So, from the academic standpoint, more than just the minutes, the requirements of going, competing, keeping up the academics, being in class the very next morning is another point that sponsors and coaches have discussed in great length. So, I also just wanted to provide that because it's not just the minutes requirement, it's the keeping up with all the things that they're juggling.
But, but they still have to keep up with their academics, right? No matter what time?
I think it's important for the board also to know that the UIL requires that a homeschooler that is participating, let's say it was allowed, they cannot receive private coaching outside of the sixty-minute athletic period during the local school day. So, there's, these, these homeschool students that are participating in other districts are still bound by some regulations and rules. And- And, you know, that's just something that you need to be aware of. There are rules. And there's a framework that those students who are allowed to participate have to abide by as well.
So, do we, do we have pros and cons from surrounding districts that have adopted this?
I don't know of any district around.
I spoke to two different, members from two different districts.
Do you have their comments where we can all see?
Well, their comments were basically more or less what everyone that doesn't wanna do this is, you know, they're taking away.
No, I'm talking about comments from districts that have opted in, that are allowing students to.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, right. Oh, the ones that opted out, okay, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I got it backwards. The districts that are allowing homeschool students to participate in UIL.
Okay, I didn't talk to, I didn't, the ones I talked to, they're, they're opting out of it. They're not gonna do it.
I'd also like to know the ones who are allowing that, if they've continued to allow, you know, year after year, because it has been good to them. I just, man, it'd be, it'd be nice to try something different as a district and see how it goes. It's okay for one, for one season to try it out. That, that's my opinion. That's what I think. I, I've been a part of sports all my life, man, and it creates leadership. And to, for someone, a whole entire family to come and speak on it, they're gonna take it serious. And I just, I hate to take that away from, from someone, from a child, from a kid.
All right. Any other board comments or questions? All right. So, just again, in favor, an aye is to opt out, and a no is to allow us to opt in. So, Mr. Gagoz?
Yea.
Ms. Duncan? Yea.
Yea.
Am I yea?
Yea.
No.
Nope.
So, it'll be five-two, to opt out. All right.
We, I'm sorry. We can't take anything from the public, but I'll be happy to talk to you afterwards during any other time.
Hold on, shake your hand?
Oh, absolutely.
For considering this and letting them go through the process, that's all we wanna do. Is that okay to break the vote? Yes.
You're raising great tears, man. Thank you, sweetie. Thank you, buddy. Good job tonight. Thanks, sir.
All right. Now, we're gonna move back to action item A on our agenda, which is consider bid twenty-five dash zero-zero-nine, Crockett Cafe Classrooms, and Mr. Henry.
Thank you for having me here tonight. Tonight I bring forward bid twenty-five dash zero-zero-nine, Crockett Elementary Cafe in Classroom Edition. As our district enrollment continues to decline and plans are made to consolidate additional campuses, Crockett was identified as a candidate for future growth. It was determined to house the students, an addition of classrooms and a new cafeteria would be needed. The acceptance of the base bid and alternate one and two will add approximately twenty-one thousand square feet and include eight classrooms, new restrooms, a new cafeteria with a stage and kitchen, seventy-seven parking places, and other start, other site work. With the assistance of Park Hill Architects, an RFP was prepared for companies qualified to do this type of construction. Bids were received from two companies qualified to perform the work needed. References were checked and subcontractors' lists were reviewed. The scoring criteria was applied, and Lee Lewis Construction not only received the highest score, but also had the lowest price of ten million, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars for the base bid and alternate one and two. The administration recommends the award of construction of the Crockett Elementary Edition to Lee Lewis for the total cost of ten million, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Do you all have any questions?
Any questions or comments? And just as a reminder, Lee Lewis is who did our McGill expansion, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Henry?
Wait, I am looking for one right here. I know that, I asked Jason about it.
Yes, I updated the, uh.
Oh, did you? Okay.
There was a discrepancy on the linear foot.
All right, thank you. Yes, there it is.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the construction of Crockett Elementary to Lee Lewis for a total cost of ten million, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars?
Dr. Kingman, I'd move to award the construction of Crockett Elementary Edition to Lee Lewis. Construction for the total cost of ten million, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars.
My second.
So, I have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Mr. Gagoz. Any further board comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. All against, say the same. Motion passes seven-zero. Next, we're gonna move on to bid twenty-five dash zero-zero-six, and Mr. Henry, you're gonna help us with that, and that's the Austin and San Jacinto demo.
After the district received its assessment of campuses, it was decided that the merger of Austin and McGill to McGill would benefit not only the students and staff, but the district as a whole. While setting up classrooms in July of twenty-twenty-four, considerable damage was discovered to a critical load-bearing wall in Building A of San Jacinto Elementary. For the safety, for safety concerns, all staff and all kindergarten through fifth-grade students were moved from San Jacinto Elementary to Reagan Elementary for the entirety of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Due to the sustained damage at San Jacinto and the merger away from Austin, the district has been left with two empty buildings that are unusable. With the assistance of Kings Consulting, specifications and drawings were produced to abate and demo Building A at Austin Elementary and to demo Building B, uh, A at San Jacinto as well. Bids were open and three contractors submitted quality bids for this work. Bids were reviewed and scored, and Reese Albert Trucking of San Angelo and Building Abatement Demolition Company, Inc. received the highest scores. The administration recommends approval for Reese Albert Trucking to demo the two buildings and Building Abatement Demolition Company for the abatement at Austin Elementary. Total cost for all demo and all abatement is four hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars, which includes a sixty thousand dollar contingency. Do you have any questions?
On the asbestos removal, I noticed that they, they go by linear feet of how much they're taking out, so forty-five, two-seventy-five, and per linear foot on it. So, that's how they, they don't, they don't put a total, like.
The, uh, the lines that you're looking at, lines two through four, I know those are, those are for unidentified, if we come across something that wasn't included in the bid specs, if we uncover a window that has caulk in it that's hot that we didn't know about, this way we have a price beforehand, before it's discovered, that we can hold them to, and it doesn't become an astronomical price.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Jason.
Mr. Henry, last week, I wanna ask you what the reasoning behind going, moving forward with the demo was this quickly, with, you know, with keeping the safety concerns of students in mind. Your response was just that the price tag could move up a little. Is there a change in that? Or is that still the reasoning behind wanting to demo the school during the school year with case nearby?
I'll answer that question. We, we don't want our building sitting idle. It becomes a, it can become dangerous, because then it's like the Travis Elementary that sits idle and becomes an eyesore. That building's not safe, and it needs to come down. And the quicker we can do it, the better. And so, that was the reasoning, and it would've been sooner had we been able to do it, but it just took, it took a little while to get there. So, I'm not concerned about the school day going on at the same time. We've done it at McGill successfully. This company that's doing it, that's what they do for a living. We feel very good about it. And we'll make sure that, that campus is safe and those kids are safe. And, you know, you hear a lot of rhetoric about, well, you've heard tonight a lot of rhetoric about that, and none of that's true. So, it'll be done right. It'll be done in a safe manner, and there won't be any danger to any kids or staff.
And you can a hundred percent guarantee that there will be absolutely no danger for those kids?
Well, I mean, is that, that's not a trick question, I hope, but you.
No, no, I'm being, um.
Well, I mean, I can't, I can't guarantee everything.
Because I would definitely not want my, my student nearby during a demo. And another question is, do the parents know?
They're bonded and insured. They'll make sure, and, and they have a track record of successful and safe demos.
Just a couple other questions I'm gonna put out there, because I know probably a lot of board members have more. Do the parents that are enrolling their students in Head Start know about this demo right now, ahead of time, before they start enrolling their kids?
I'll defer to Dr. Gomez on that, because I know Head Start's been communicating with parents about the traffic flow and all of that.
Because I have gotten an influx of, of messages asking and concerned about, they're, they're not all on the same page. They're thinking that the students are gonna be in the building that's gonna be demoed. They're thinking, you know, that San Jacinto is unsafe, where are my kids going there? So, the communication has been lacking, I think. I, I don't know.
Well, once this gets approved tonight, if it's approved, then we'll start communicating when the demo will happen. But we didn't wanna communicate that prior to board approval.
Oh, okay. And two, so you'll let the surrounding neighborhoods know also about what's going on?
We're not gonna go door to door necessarily.
No, maybe just the, the block nearby, because that's, that's gonna be a lot of, a lot of construction, a lot of dust, a lot of debris, and who knows what, what else is in the air, and a hundred-plus-year-old building.
And Dr. Moran, I'll just add, the district has not been able to communicate with the Head Start students at this time, because they're not enrolled in our system until the end of this month, the first of August. So, the district has not sent any direct communication to Head Start parents. But I will be at the end of this month and the first of August. So, I can't speak to any communication that's gone out, because that hasn't come from us. However, myself and Dr. Brandon stay in touch with Head Start multiple times a week.
Yeah, and I just reiterate, we certainly wouldn't communicate something that hadn't been approved yet, so, you know, here we are.
And I just wanted to make a comment on an idle building. I mean, we had one, other than Travis, we sold that, okay? And the owner just let it be idle, and we've been kicking ourselves ever since we did that, at least I have. But, um, we had a building, the old Lincoln site, you remember that, Mr. Dindel, that sat idle for years, after we built the new Lincoln back in ninety-six, it was built, I think, yeah, ninety-eight. But it sat there for years. Now, the only ones that would use it was San Angelo Police Department, and they would just use it for SWAT training, which was probably a week, two weeks. But after that, they had a lot of time with transient staying in there.
Arson.
Arson, people catching it on fire. It was a nuisance. And fi-, and granted, a lot of people didn't want it torn down. I mean, I didn't want, you know, I mean, it's an old, it was built kinda like the old, uh, like San Jacinto, it was an old building, but, you know, after what I've seen with Travis, that's gone on there, you know, broken windows, and we're not responsible. And I get calls all the time, why don't y'all tear that Travis down? It's not ours anymore, you know? And, and so, that's, that's the thing. And I understand your concern about safety, because that, that concerns me too. Asbestos, hot stuff, because those buildings, they're lined with a lot of stuff and probably a lot of stuff that wasn't in there. So, yeah, I mean, if we could, like, send a flyer out or something to the, just the neighboring area that we will start construction on this, on this day and tearing this down and all that. And, yeah, that's, that's, that's all I wanted to say on, on an idle building, because it does, it does, it becomes a big nuisance. It really does.
I, I was gonna say, like, as far as safety, I mean, obviously, I don't think anyone can guarantee a hundred percent, but companies who do this tear down buildings in towns with a much tighter footprint than what we're dealing with at our campus. You know, we, when I was in Houston in the Med Center, we, they tear down hospitals right next to the hospital while, while they're still, to build a new hospital in the hospital, in the medical center. So, companies who do this, this is what they do for a living, and this is what, why we're choosing a company, I mean, we, in combination with Reese Albert, that does this for, this, what their job is, is to demolish buildings safely. And so, I think, for me, that's where, you know, I put my faith in the fact that it will be done safely, because this is what they do as a day-in, day-out building.
Yeah, I'm not doubting their, their profession and that they're good or bad at it, but there's always a risk. And with the young littles nearby, I'd prefer to look at options, maybe, why can't we do it during a holiday break when nobody is nearby? I'm not talking about years, like Travis sitting there idle. I'm talking just a little bit of time when nobody is nearby, just for safety concerns.
Well, I think as we approve it, then the company will look to see how, how to most safely do it. And we can work with them to make sure that we're, that they're doing something that is safe for our students.
Okay, so this doesn't mean that it's gonna start at the beginning of the, of the school year, or during the school year?
It, well, it would mean it will happen during the school year, yes, but as far as what day and time it happens, that won't be set, that'll be set by the company doing the work.
So, there's an opportunity to schedule it during a holiday or some type of break?
Well, if the board approves it, we've already got a rough schedule roughed out. And I think demo begins, do you have a, an idea? It's two weeks, isn't it? Something like that?
Yeah, we have to give the state two weeks' notice.
Yeah.
And then we'll start demo after that.
Yeah.
So, we could actually start before school starts?
Yeah.
Yes. That's the idea. I did, I did reach out to Reese Albert and spoke to him personally and mentioned your concerns. And he said that most likely what he would do is knock the building down after hours or on a weekend. And then pretty much the rest of it is just piling it all up and putting it in trucks and hauling it off. But I did mention to him your concerns, and he, he understood that, so.
And again, the, the local company doesn't wanna have any risk to our students either.
No.
You know, and so, like, that's a good thing as well, because everyone is in the same boat, wanting to make sure that we do everything as safely as possible.
Well, let me ask one question, another one. When, when will we start? When will, because I know we're gonna be using it as a Head Start campus, correct? So, when will they start? If, if, if.
August fourteenth.
So, they will start on August fourteenth, okay.
All right. Do I have a motion regarding bid twenty-five dash zero-zero-six?
Dr. Kingman, I'd recommend the approval of Reese Albert Trucking to demo the two buildings and Building Abatement Demolition Company. For the abatement of Austin Elementary.
Building A.
Uh, Building A and San Jack Building.
A.
A. Total cost for demolition is four hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars, which includes a sixty thousand dollars contingency. And I, I know I haven't commented on this yet, but I think, again, the longer abandoned building stands, stands vacant, the more risk that the district serves itself up to as we move forward for kids coming through there, doing whatever. I mean, if it's, again, regardless of the failure, the building is a hundred fifteen years old, and it is structurally unsound. So, I think the sooner it happens, the better. So, with that, my motion is made.
I'll second.
So, I have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Dr. Mills. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same?
I'm gonna say nay, just on the San Jacinto part, starting demo now. I don't know if that's a nay or, or how I should vote.
So, the, it's a, the motion was to approve it as outlined, so it's either yea or nay. Nay. So, motion passes six-one. And I'm gonna do one more thing, because it doesn't save a lot of time, but I realized I also left someone else sitting in the background. We're gonna consider the approval of KFW Architects for bond project, twenty-twenty-five bond projects, which is item E, Dr. Brandon. You're getting ready to be up there for a little while, so we're just gonna move it around how you do it. Sorry if I screwed up your PowerPoint. The board, it's on page sixty-nine.
With the passage of Proposition A, the district started conversations regarding a bond construction timeline, projects list, and possible construction delivery methods. KFW Architects has been a vital part of many San Angelo ISD projects. Mr. Frankine, Mr. Weiner are here with us tonight, and we appreciate them. We've had conversations. Once we had the construction methods, discussing not only delivery methods, but each project as we begin to talk about scope. But as part of that, there has to be a contract approved. And so, you have before you the request for qualifications that KFW Architects has provided. You see their work. You see their work, their engineers, their scope of experience with multiple projects similar to those that we've discussed. Once we make the, once the board makes the approval this evening, it authorizes the superintendent to negotiate the contract. We're approving their qualifications and putting forward to negotiate that contract. So KFW will be able to represent as architect of the bond projects that have been presented to the Board of Trustees.
Do I have any questions or comments regarding the approval of KFW Architects for bond projects of 2025 bond? Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to select KFW Architects based on their demonstrated competence and qualifications pursuant to Texas Government Code 2254 dot 004 to provide architectural engineering design and contract administration services for the district's 2025 bond projects and further authorize the superintendent or his designee to finalize and execute a contract with the selected architect for a fair and reasonable price.
So I have a motion from Mr. Gallegos, do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second from Ms. Mizele Flint. Any further board comments or questions?
Dr. Heeman, I know that KFW has had a long standing history with schools and has done a lot of great work for the schools over the, over a long period of time and I think they're already scheduled for a significant number of projects on the bond as we move forward. So thank you very much for reaffirming our, our, our confidence in you with data and names. Thank you.
Any other board comments? All in favors, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes 7-0. I'm sorry, I'm jumping around, guys, I should have changed this around. All right, now we're going back to item C, which is the Consider the Council of Government Lease Agreement. And that's on page 53, since I changed pages on here.
Our next step as part of our partnership with the Council of Governments in enrolling students for the Head Start program as partners is approval of the lease agreement. Just to hit a couple of major points, I know you've been provided the agreement. As part of Rio Vista, there was a, an amount of lease for Day and Rio Vista. We are waiving the lease for San Jacinto since the students will be enrolled as San Angelo ISD students. Those are four-year-olds and so we will, it will be a partnership. I think they're just as excited to be there as we are. They were in one of the oldest facilities that we had in Rio Vista. And so, once they took the tour and walked through the classrooms, it created excitement for them to be there. We have a brand new playground that was installed a year ago that they'll be able to access and be a part of. One of the main things that you'll see in the agreement is we asked for a separation of Day Early Childhood Center and San Jacinto Early Childhood Center in what we were going to take part of and then what they would oversee. And what you find is that we're accepting most of the responsibilities in San Jacinto due to that being San Angelo ISD campus. We want to maintain and oversee what goes on on that campus. We will be responsible for the utilities, water, gas, electric, sewer, all of those things are in our name and will continue to be. So there are different services that you see, HVAC, thermostats, programming. We will continue to oversee that for them, which they appreciate. That's some staff that they won't require will keep up the grounds and maintenance. If they have a door lock issue, we want to know that, right, as part, as one of our campuses. So I didn't know if there was anything that you saw in particular. They have their own insurance for contents. We keep insurance on the property casualty for the property. The one thing that they are going to do is pest control. We talked about that and we weren't really sure the dynamics of what Head Start program requirements. And so they'll do the pest control on both buildings because of that. They already have a contract with someone moving forward, but they'll keep us informed of any needs that they have outside of that.
And the, to your point, the biggest change with this agreement is the fact that we will continue to be responsible for maintenance so that as we try to come up with a plan, as we look at our revitalization plans in the future and everything, we keep track of those air conditioning units, those structural needs, those facility needs. So we don't get up against a wall later when we have not been in charge of maintaining those. It's our responsibility, so if there's a problem with it, it's on us.
That's a great example. I mean, as expensive as HVAC is and we've replaced many of those units, then our staff will be responsible for going in and replacement of filters and just oversight, maintenance of those units. And so we'll continue to do that. I, I think if you would ask them, they appreciate the fact that we're going to be that partner handling many of those things for them at that facility. And at the end of the day, those 154-year-olds are enrolled as SA ISD students.
Also, that rental amount coming from Day will help us with expenses that, as we move forward in that campus, if they do arise.
Say that again, sir?
There's a certain amount of rental income coming from Day?
Yes, so we continue our lease agreement with Day at the same cost. And then for the four-year-olds, we would be able to claim ADA on those students. And over time, as we're able to put certified teachers in the classrooms with the three-year-olds, we would be able to claim average daily attendance. We'd be able to be reimbursed those amounts from the state as well.
All right, do I have a motion? Oh, sorry, sorry.
I was wondering, is, is that ADA the full amount or half?
Well, it's still up in the air. They, right, it's been Governor, Governor Abbott said full day. When you called the state, straight from TEA Finance Division, they said, you better plan on half. So I'm taking that, they met their word and we're planning on half and then we'll see how things go.
I can speak for myself and the families in that community that I know that we're all very thankful and excited that San Jacinto is still part of SA ISD. At the same time, I'd like to know, considering that we are taking care of the utilities still, what is the difference in allowing pre-school age students in this campus compared to elementary? Why was elementary uprooted, but now we're allowing pre-K students to be a part of San Jacinto? It's still in SA ISD, what is the difference there?
I would, I would comment that the main difference is that there are only going to be 100, the max capacity is 150 students.
Okay, so that's the max that can fit in those surrounding buildings is 150?
And so part of the grant that COG receives as Head Start, they're paying all the administrative salaries that go along with that, counselors, nursing. They're paying all the staff, they're paying the paraprofessionals, they're paying the teachers. So all of that is being assumed by them. We're simply allowing them use of those buildings. It's approximately 18 classrooms. So that, that, that would be the max capacity. That would be hard for us to come in and say that we were going to run. That's what we've been dealing with in the closure of small campuses. We could not staff it appropriately for the amount of funding that would come from that. It's just unique in this partnership that they can receive the grant funds and pay for staff and leases and bills. But at the same time, as enrolled as SA ISD students, we can receive the ADA on that.
Other questions?
Yeah, on security, I noticed that they'll, they'll do all the security camera leases. The Leacy will be responsible for all security on that San Jacinto campus and Day. But like San Jacinto, for example, they're going to be using the Pope Street entrance, correct, the little side street to?
It would be the west side, the west entrance, yes, sir.
Facing east entrance up there. When it comes to security, like vestibules and all that, because I know we did that work over there at the Building A and all that's going away. Are we going to be able to provide any of that or would that be up to the COG to do that?
Well, we're not adding a vestibule, we're not constructing anything. The parents, yeah, when we talked earlier, the parents would come through the gate and I think the office is right around to the right. But it's, it's there, but there won't be any construction. We're not constructing an office area or anything like that.
They're also continuing to use, that was the entrance we had for our tiny Texans at San Jacinto.
The Pope Street entrance?
Yes, and there was, it's basically a ring doorbell, which they had access on iPads. That's what our staff had. They're continuing a system very similar so that they can buzz parents in and out.
Okay, thank you. I did have one more. On, on your list, on the contract, I did notice that Day, the Leacy COG will pay gas, electric, water, okay? But at San Jack, the district will pay gas, electric, water. Why is that separate like that?
We're just helping assume some of the cost for COG due to the fact that we can collect the ADA. We won't be collecting that on the Day students, the three-year-olds at Day. We will be doing that, so just as a partner, we're assuming some of those costs to keep the cost down for the Head Start program.
Okay, all right.
Any other board comments or questions?
This is sort of outside the lease agreement, but we'll be working with professional development with these teachers, is that right?
Yes, sir. In fact, we had 20 of their staff members join us last week on July 15th at our Learning Palooza.
And all this is to hopefully have students come into our district that are more prepared for.
Absolutely, the alignment between the two entities is crucial for a smooth transition.
Excellent, thank you.
Any further board comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve the bid of the Council of Government Lease Agreement?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the Council of Government Lease Agreement as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So a motion from Dr. Mills and a second from Mr. Dindel. Any further board comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. All against, say the same. Motion passes 7-0. All right, next item is item D and Dr. Brandon's going to stay up there to consider a construction manager at risk scoring criteria.
With the passage of Proposition A, the district started conversations regarding bond, construction timeline, projects list and delivery construction methods. As part of that CMAR, construction manager at risk was discussed by Park Hill for most of our major projects. And as part of the CMAR process, we need a scoring rubric. So when that company, when that contractor is selected, we have a detailed accounting for what it is that we're looking for in that company. So you have in front of you a proposed CMAR scoring criteria with a point basis. So if you kind of look down the list, for example, the very first one, pricing zero to five points in the compensation pre-construction phase services. And then during construction phase services, their pricing, their resume of their project manager, who is the job superintendent? What is their experience? Have they built schools, public PK 12 schools before? All of those things are answered within the rubric. And then the very last, you know, do they have any litigation against them? They would have to present that, have they had any struggles with other construction projects? And then the last one, any other relevant factors? How well do we think they could perform the work? Goes into the scoring criteria as well. Each one of those has a numeric value to it. And then you have the evaluation committee makeup, superintendent or deputy superintendent, director of construction, director of maintenance and facilities, and then a representative of Park Hill Architects. So what we would ask is just simple approval of the scoring rubric so that when it comes time to interview construction manager at risk companies, this is the documentation that we will be using as part of that evaluation.
Dr. Brandon, just so I, as far as experience with other K-12 school districts, that's also where experience with our own district would fit into criteria. As in saying where we're like, we would look, be looking at how they've entered, like, we obviously have construction firms that we've been happier with and less happy with. And so I guess would that fall into the scoring criteria? I just want to make sure it's within the scoring criteria and I guess that would be, we would be including ourselves in the K-12 school districts?
Correct, so that would be part and then even that last category, other relevant factors. As you kind of look through, there's a lot of different areas that that can cover. And so past performance, things that we know that a contractor has complied with, not complied with, guidelines they followed or not followed, timelines, that would be, certainly be a category that, that would be a consideration of.
And I might add, the experience as a construction manager at risk, zero to 25 points. When we have experience with them, that's where that could be easily applied.
Okay, I like rubrics, I just want to make sure the rubric accomplishes what we are trying to accomplish. And so, which is to make sure we get the best people in place to do this project, these projects.
On the list of litigation and claims made in the last five years or whatever, if we are not informed of that or not made aware of it and say we hire them, do we still reserve the right to not use them?
I would say that'd be a question for Walsh Gallegos, right? That would be something that we had immediately would bring to their attention and then.
I'm not saying that we're going to have one, but just.
That'd be a legal question.
That would be a legal question. Can you ask them that, Dr. Rand?
Well, I mean, it would, would I ask them?
Yeah, yeah, can you ask them for me and then just?
No, the answer is yes, they, they would, on our behalf.
Oh, 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 oh.
Yes, yeah, well, you'd just pick up the phone and call the lawyer. If someone defrauded the, their eligibility, that would certainly be a legal problem for them, yeah.
I want to know now.
Any, any further comments or questions regarding the construction manager at risk scoring criteria? Do I have a motion to approve the construction manager at risk scoring rubric as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the CMAR scoring rubric as presented.
Do I have a second?
A second.
So a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Mrs. Duncan. Any further board comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. All against, say the same. Motion passes 7-0. All right. Next, we're going to go to item F, which is Consider the 2526 Employee Compensation. And Dr. Brandon is going to help us with that and I believe there's a handout at each of our desks regarding that as well. And that's page 105, since we have been jumping around a little bit.
Okay, since we went through these slides in the presentation during pre-agenda, we're going to move kind of quickly through the different funding sources, our tax rate, our declining student enrollment. We've talked about student attendance, but one of the things that we want to stress is certainly House Bill 2, new legislation. What you find on this slide is the funding from House Bill 2 in the areas of school safety, special education, basic cost allotment, the teacher retention allotment. Those are the mandatory teacher raises to be for each district. And then support staff retention allotment that picks up any additional staffing in those areas and/or the benefits that also come with those raises. We started the budget from a student membership of 12,800, where we finished the year at a 93.5 attendance rate. And then we took the demographers decline projection, 1.0. And then we took the demographers decline projection, 1.3%, and built the budget on 11,812 students. From that budget, with our property values, we have our local revenue and then our state and federal revenue. And then we see the summary. From '24, '25 to '25, '26, we see a decrease in our local tax revenue, mainly because we are moving to a homestead exemption from $100,000 to $140,000 and then a $200,000 homestead exemption for 65 and older. So if you were 65 and older and then you had, for example, a $190,000 home, you would not pay any tax locally towards the school district for that home if you had your homestead exemption. And then all of the others, we have to take that $40,000 out of that evaluation. So you see a drop in $4 million, but what you do see on the state level is they pick that up for the district. And added to that is the $4 million in teacher raises and benefits. And then very consistent, we've stayed the same on federal. So new money to the district, $5 million. We've been working through staffing predictions as we've had declining enrollment. We try to stay out in front of our staffing projections and have a similar decline in staffing to, of that 1.3% to 1.5%. You have what those reductions have been to this point. And that's not, the HR department is doing a great job of that's simply through attrition. That's not through anyone simply losing a position, right? So in our pay system review, we went page by page. You have this evening, a couple of, you have a one-pager for Job Family 100. Let me grab my copy. Couple of changes on, so if you see the, looking at the pay grades 101 through 104 on the front page, we have a change at the very bottom, teacher retention specialist, that will be funded through title. And then on the back of that page, we have deleted a position, Director of Campus Academic Support. And we realized that we only had two directors left in pay grade 105. After we did the TASB salary and took their recommendations, we had two directors left in 105. And so we've moved them to 106 with the other directors. So I just wanted to note those changes. The others that we discussed kind of page by page from the salary study are still there. So we come to, as we talk about the compensation plan, two things, right? Employee health insurance is a consideration as it's time for our employees to pick a plan for themselves and/or their family and also salary increases. The TRS active care policy will increase by $41. We currently, as a district, pay $479 toward every employee to create a free or a no-cost option for the employee only. We have certainly options. We can either remain at $479. We could, for example, let's say we increase to $500 and then split that with the employee this year. We could go to $520 and cover that full amount. You see in the boxes per month and per year, if we were to cover all $41 per month for the 1,800-plus employees, it'd be $713,000. If we do half of that, it would be approximately a little over $350,000. And then if we kept it at $479, that full $700,000 could be used toward employee raises and/or benefits. So we took that information along with the projected revenue. And you'll see in the considerations, the House Bill Two, the TASB salary study recommendations, and the possibility of a 2% general pay increase. Each one of those has a subtotal, and then benefits are approximately 12%. TRS, workers' comp, the different benefits that we cover as part of the raise. And then you see the total amount across the bottom, the 4.4 million for teachers. You find a non-instructional teacher increase projected here of 1,500. And then our one- and two-year teachers were not covered in the legislative action. Only three and four at $2,500 and five and over at $5,000. So those considerations for the non-instructional staff, 1,500, and then also our one- and two-year teachers, 1,500. And then we have our TASB salary increases from the study that we looked at, and then the 2%. So you see the total projected from this school year, '24, '25, with TRE and benefits. So we captured this school year, the maximum amount of employee pay and benefits at $109 million. And then we added to that the compensation, House Bill Two, TASB, and a 2% GPI. We backed out 5%. We have approximately 15% of the employees that do not take the insurance. We backed out 5% of that at $540,000. And then the reductions that we have, a projected estimate at the moment, conservative at $1 million. And then you find that we have $113 million in salaries projected for payroll for '25, '26. That slides over to our proposed budget. We have our contracted services that we increased, supplies and materials, and miscellaneous operating expenses. And then the $138,572 is what you found on the projected revenue. So for a balanced budget, after considering the payroll considerations. And then we talked about the options. You had those, I don't know if you still have your copy. I apologize if you don't, do you? So, questions about those options? We kind of went from top to bottom with, stay at $479 on insurance.
So looking at the stuff, and I apologize as I wasn't here last week, so I don't, I'm going to sound a little bit...
Okay.
But I want to make sure, looking at the options that were presented last week, I thought there was an option for a balanced budget with $479 and a 3% raise.
There is. So we'll be, we'll balance the budget on any of the five options.
Okay.
And if I can advocate for that, if I were recommending something tonight, we had talked about increasing health insurance or giving that to all of our employees in the form of a pay increase and letting them decide. I would advocate for a 3% increase with the TASB adjustments that have been made and the implementation of the House Bill Two teacher salary increase. There are some employee stipend amounts included, but all of that with the 3%, we can balance the budget. And I think our employees will feel, I think it's a good move, especially because we don't know what's going to happen next year. And we can do it now and do it with stewardship and balance, so.
So, and I apologize if I remember, so a 3% raise, I just want to make sure of, which, if we did, we're still roughly at a 1% raise is a million dollars plus or minus overall for the district, 1.2 now?
So as we've reduced staff, right, two years ago is 1 million and then it dropped to nine. Now it's approximately 800, 820,000 for a 1%. But what happens in this model with the state funding all the teacher raises, it's only half that for a percent raise for the remaining employees of the district, so.
And is there anyone not in the teacher pay family, and you may not have this information, so I apologize, that the extra 1% would be less than the $41 more a month that they'd be getting on their paycheck? So like, if we keep them at $479, there are, there are some employees that work for our district for health insurance. There are other employees that don't get any benefit from us increasing the health insurance because they're getting their health insurance from their husband or wife's employer. But if they are working for us to get health insurance and we don't cover that $41 more, the additional 1% to go from 2% to 3%, they should get more than $41 more a month in their paycheck? Would we, would that 1% cover that for all employees?
So if you took a, let's just say $30,000, and then 1% would be 300. Then that's 30, what, $25, $28 a month?
So it's not quite.
Right. It would take, the 2% would more than cover, but then the, if you did 3%, then that's where the raise would be above that plus with covering the insurance amount.
But in, but in trading for that, we're giving every employee that extra 1%?
Right. And I think Dr. Moran made a great point last week that we do have 15% of the employees that don't take the insurance. And so when we have made the increases, I hadn't really thought of it that way, but they don't see the benefit. I mean, the other 85% do because we continue to pay more for the health insurance. But those 15%, they honestly benefit more from a raise, a percent raise, because they're not taking the insurance.
And if, and if we use the 30,000 number for math, it's roughly $13 a month that's a difference. Is that what we calculated? Yeah, 13, roughly, that's a difference. That it's not being covered. So...
We did, we were interested to make sure, we wanted to see what other districts around us were doing. And so Wesley Smith and payroll benefits, we do pay more than all, there's one school district that pays higher, and they have a privately funded company, that being Earring County. But San Angel ISD is considerably higher than all of our other districts.
For health insurance contribution?
For health insurance contribution.
Yeah. And I mean, to, you know, for the employee only, that significant contribution still covers a significant portion of it that would allow someone who is working for our district for health insurance, they would still have that incentive to do that, so. Any other comments or questions for Dr. Brandon? I will make a motion, I don't think it's in the, is there not a recommendation in, that I would, I would, I would make an motion to go with option 1A, which would be to implement House Bill Two, teacher retention pay increases as presented, implement House Bill Two, non-instructional pay increases as presented, implement the TASB pay recommendations, and then implement a 3% pay increase for all other employees not receiving an increase by House Bill Two or TASB, and then maintain the monthly employee health insurance at a contribution of $479 per month and delivering a balanced budget. Do I have a second for that?
Dr. Brandon, I think the simple math for all that, when I was working on this week, is that that technically is about a million dollars worth of sustainable expense that we add with just a straight 3% increase to our employees. Is that about right?
About a one, oh, on the 3%?
Yeah, uh-huh.
Yes, that would be just over 1 million. The 700,000...
Right, yes, huh? So 3%, 1 million, 5, somewhere in there.
Right.
Yeah.
And we are covering also the 367,000...
Of the TASB expenses.
Of the TASB.
Yeah, TASB.
Right. So in that bottom line with benefits, almost 800, plus a percent would be 1.2 million, and then the 400. So we would be covering approximately 1.6 million.
Okay. With that, I'll second.
So we're not going to be doing the, I think, because you mentioned going, doing half of the insurance, like going to 500, or...
Well, my, my motion was for 479. I mean, I, I'm happy for more board comments or questions.
No, I, I was just clarifying because I thought when you, when you mentioned earlier, I thought you said we, we had, we were, had the budget to do 3% and half of the...
Oh, sorry.
To do the 500.
Yes. So if we, so of the, what we've captured in, what you can see in the chart here, 5% of the 15% that don't take the insurance, a little bit of a buffer, right? Just in case we had an odd year that more employees took the insurance. So if we back out another 5% and we budget at 90% of the employees taking the insurance, then we would cover the $21.
Because I guess the OCD part of me just seems like if we're going to stop every insurance, 500 seems like a better number than, than 479.
And transparently, I'll tell you that the reason I didn't go there was, not that it's right or wrong, but I didn't want to put Dr. Brandon in a bind. I know he's trying to bring a balanced budget. There's going to be some unforeseen costs. There's going to be some things that we didn't anticipate or plan for. So I didn't want him to feel the pressure to do that. That was the reason I actually stayed at 479. But that gives him a little more breathing room when he's budgeting.
Gotcha.
How much breathing room do you need?
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll get there, right? We'll hit the number.
So...
Whatever y'all decide.
So we have a motion and a second for 3% and 479.
And then employees pay the additional $41.
And the employees would be responsible for the additional $41. Yeah. Because we, they still have to cover.
Yes.
Do I, any board comments or questions? I guess there was a second from Mr. Dindel. I guess we could entertain a different motion, but we should deal with this one first. So if there's no other board comments or questions, we'll take a vote on this one. If someone feels strongly about a different one, we can take a motion and a second regarding that. So don't feel, and we can come back to this one if that one doesn't get a second. I apologize for moving quickly. So we have a motion for myself and a second from Mr. Dindel. All in favor, say, or with no other board comments, all in favor, say aye. All against, say the same. So motion passes seven zero.
Dr. Brandon, just, oh, sorry. Dr. Brandon, as a backward comment, the state has guaranteed they're hold harmless for two years. Is that correct?
They have.
Have they guaranteed beyond that point? Not really. We'll see what the new binding in brings.
Right, from there?
I know the reduction of taxes and the increase of homestead exemption, that decreases our local revenue. And I know the state has guaranteed for two years of hold harmless. So as we move forward, we'll see what the legislature brings as far as school funding in the future.
That's true. I mean, that's a great point. I mean, the 40,000, the additional $40,000 in homestead exemption is going to help all of our employees as well, you know, that are within the school district as well as if, if we had an employee that went to 200,000. So that also will be a benefit.
And although we don't know what two years from now will look like, we've now been able to give our employees a 4% raise last December, an additional 3% raise. And obviously, we love to cover health insurance and everything else. But in the big scheme of things, we've been able to, in addition to the House Bill Two required fundings, we've been able to hopefully make it to where we're trying to catch up on all of our job families and improve their ability to survive in increased cost. All right. Next, Michael Kalmbach gets the joys of the code of conduct, which for this year has a few wrinkles.
A few, yeah, for sure. Dr. Moran, Dr. Kingman, members of the board. So each year, you have to adopt a student code of conduct, as Dr. Kingman said. I don't, I don't know about his description of it, but there is a lot, there's a lot this year. Every two years coming out of... Every two years coming out of the legislative session, if they make any changes to Chapter 37, which is the, the law that governs all of the discipline, then we would bring those to you. You've had a copy of the code of conduct with the changes in it. We're not going to go through all of those. I do have, I don't know if you had the slides or I sent them to you a second ago, but I just had a, there's just a couple of themes that, that the code of conduct addresses. One of them being protection of students and staff, primarily staff. And so the, the law has updated, really given us as a school district and principals, administrators more leeway in terms of what we can do to protect our teachers in particular. And then the other one is protecting instructional time. So those are the two themes. And tonight, we're, while you're going to be voting on the whole code of conduct, we're just going to, there's a few major changes that are going to affect our families and our teachers. So just want to kind of touch on those just a little bit. On the protecting students and staff side, they, the legislature basically, they got very involved in this and very, right, very detailed. Like they made some laws that pretty much establish how things will work and what we will be doing. And so within the student code of conduct, you have certain behaviors that have discretionary consequences and then you have mandatory. And the, the law kind of outlines what those are. And so we build that into the student code of conduct. Well, this year, if you can just imagine on many of the things that were in the code of conduct in a certain spot, maybe as discretionary, has moved up to a mandatory. So there were quite a few things that have moved up in terms of the intensity of the disciplinary consequences that would be given. And they're, they're around a couple of areas, one being physical aggression and violence against staff. And so that has moved up considerably to mandatory where if, if you, if you, for example, if you assault a teacher, then that's now a mandatory expulsion, whereas before it was discretionary. So.
Or mandatory D A E P?
There, for an assault against, for an assault against a teacher, I don't know if you've got it right there in front of you, you can make sure, but I have to look at it in particular, but it, it was a mandatory, it might have moved from a discretionary to a mandatory. There are so many things that moved up with those. So the main goal is to emphasize that we're not going to allow our teachers to be assaulted. Now, there are mitigating circumstances. It's very important to note that special education, students with disabilities, that remains in place. So we will still have to do the, we'll go through all of those processes when we're working with a student with a disability. But a major emphasis on protecting our teachers. The next one is parental involvement. It's an interesting one. Basically, it's kind of a start of the legislature holding parents accountable to some degree or giving us as a school district some options. And so did it just get really like, really warm when we started about, talking about the code of conduct or something? Okay.
It's been warm for an hour.
It's not distracting, it's not distracting or anything. Yeah, it is warm. Okay. So just really quickly on the parental involvement, basically what it's done is the, it's allowed us as a district to assign a set of consequences. And then we can go to the parent if there is something that we feel like the parent could do to help the student. So let's, let's say in a case where maybe it's addiction or something like that, that we could reduce the number of, or the intensity of the discipline if the parent agrees. So there's, they've introduced this concept of a parental agreement to get the student help i, i, from a parent standpoint. So it's, it's, it's working with, giving us some options and working with parents to do some things outside and then get a reduced disciplinary consequence in the school. None of that has been defined yet. It's like this new concept that they've put in the law. And so we're going to be getting some guidance from, from our, from the lawyers and from TASB on what that's going to look like. And also TEA is supposed to provide us some models for those parental agreements. So that's a really, it's a positive thing. It's just new. So we're going to have to work through that and what it might look like. But it's, it's got some real potential. And then, as I said before, just expanding some of the options for really serious offenses. On the protecting the instructional side, this is, I'm sure what everybody was waiting to hear about, is the cell phone situation. So here's the deal. It's part of the law. The, the law states, and it's very specific, that you cannot use a cell phone or a whole list of things. I think you saw it in their smart, the smart watches, all, anything that can, you can communicate with will, are not allowed to be used during the school day. So just a more specific look at that, we'll, we'll be defining the school day as bell to bell. So I want to be very clear that we are not adopting a policy where students cannot possess them. We are, we, they will be allowed to possess the phone while they're at school. One, I mean, before school and after school in terms of communicating with their parents on transportation and that. But also in the case of an emergency, we, we advocate for our students to be able to communicate if there was an emergency. And so being able to call or text, they're not going to get in trouble for that if there was an emergency situation. So we're not, some, some districts are adopting it where you can't even be in possession. You have to leave it at home. We are not adopting a policy like that. Our policy will be, it cannot, and it goes by the law, the law says you cannot use these devices on campus during the school day. So it'll be bell to bell if you're on campus. You can't be using the device. So I guess there's some questions about the cell phone situation or not?
Well, the law that they wrote said during instructional time. That's what I was wondering about. Is instructional time just during class time or is it the whole day? Are we making it the whole day?
So we get a model student code of conduct from TASB that aligns to the law. And all of the guidance from TASB for the code of conduct establishes a school day. So on campus during the school day. Instructional time for us is a, typically is the bell to bell. So from the first bell to the last bell of the day.
Yeah. So I'm going to make a comment and then, you know, obviously we talk about the protecting students and staff and that's very important. But the students involved in that portion of the new student code of conduct is a very small percentage. Whereas the students involved in the cell phone.
It's everybody.
Is everybody, which is why it's going to get more play. I think, I want to reiterate what you said is that as a district, we value keeping kids safe. And the fact of the matter is we want kids to have cell phones on campus if there is a true emergency. We want kids to be able to access that. We want people to be able to get information from those. Those are a tool that unfortunately, in the reality of public education and school safety, that's a tool we do not want to limit. So I think that's important to reiterate to parents that we don't want to reiterate, we don't want to limit that. But the reality is this is the law. And so now our teachers are going to be held to keep it be consistent. Our campus leadership is going to be held to keep it consistent. And parents are going to have to understand that they're following the state law. And there are going to be parents who, I've already heard from some, they're going to be upset with the fact that they cannot contact their student throughout the day, the way they have traditionally done. And, but the reality is that is a new phenomenon in the fact that that can happen. So we want to use the benefits of the, of the cell phones where we can to make sure that we're keeping kids safe. But we also want to make sure that parents understand that they're going to have to be our, work with us on this because we're following a state law. And so our teachers and administrators are going to have to follow that state law. And it's being put on us to enforce that. So we, the same way you tell your kid to buckle up their seatbelt because it's the law, you're going to have, we as parents, all of us who are parents, and as a community, we're going to have to follow that same law. And it's not the teacher's fault. It's not the administrator's fault. It's, the reality is we're following a law and that is what as a district we have to do. So.
That's well said. You could, I could make an appeal here as well that we, we believe in this. As district administrators, we met with principals today in the, you could, you could make an argument that, and you use the seatbelt illustration, but the dangers of it, but also the distractions of it. There's a lot of research coming out about the, the distraction and how much learning is lost because of those distractions. It's, it's significant. And so we believe in it. We also acknowledge all that you just said as well and how difficult it will be to enforce. But we're willing and ready to enforce it and work with parents. We welcome that in this process because it's going to get real.
Well, sorry. Well, each campus, let's say a child does have their phone out. Is each campus going to come up, I mean, how's the, what is the consequence? Is it going to be a district consequence?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And we're, you know, this just happened. So we're, we'll be working and publishing that.
Right.
In plenty of time before the school starts, like what will happen if you, it, it's, it's basically confiscation, which is really part of the law as well. Like they put it right in there about what schools are able to do and what we're not able to do. But it'll be a graduated system of like a first offense, second offense, third offense type of a thing. But it'll be, it'll be well known and well communicated out before the school year ever starts about what this is going to look like. And specifically what devices, because there's 100 different devices as well. And so we'll, we'll put all of that out. But it will be consistent, yes, as a district. It's almost impossible to enforce if it's not.
And I just want to reiterate, Mr. Kalmbach, I think that communication is very important because we talked about, most people don't ever look to our, don't ever look at our student code of conduct. Most of our students don't get affected by the student code of conduct on a day to day basis. But every student almost in our district is going to be affected by this change to our student code of conduct. And so even parents who aren't used to looking at the student code of conduct, they say, oh, my kid never gets in trouble, all those things. We got to make sure that every parent is aware of this and every student's aware of it because it's really does, I would, I have no idea, but I bet at our secondary level, 90% of kids have a cell phone. So.
Yeah, it's higher. It's higher than, it's almost everyone.
Not quite as sensational, but caveatting back to the protecting students and staff, I think a significant amount of districts collaborated with legislature this year to help strengthen that, that position as far as protecting teachers and staff moving forward. So I think it was a, a lot of districts got together and I think even our, our district and Dr. Moran testified maybe about the need for maybe some little stiffer penalties on, and protecting our, our staff for sure. So. Thanks to the, thanks to the legislature for actually listening to the folks that have feet, boots on the ground there. So.
Yes. The, the only other point to make in terms of the threats, threat assessments and all of that, all of that stayed in place. But did there, the legislature also provided us an opportunity to give a significant consequence in terms of someone who has made a threat or some of these intense behaviors where they've made a threat against either the school or, or an individual, where we can keep them for a time period away from those people and still serve them. So the legislature brought in, and we wrote, actually, we asked for it, Dr. Moran asked for it specifically, to be able to do some type of virtual, in other words, stay connected and stayed enrolled and still serve them, but also protect our students and staff when they've made a threat against someone or something like that. So we'll be working through that. That's another benefit of the, the law that's going to help us provide options. It's a balance because we are charged with serving every student, even the one who did something wrong. And we are legally obligated to enroll them as well. And that, in other words, the needs of one sometimes don't match with the needs of all of the rest of them. And so the legislature, I think, did a good job of giving us more options in doing that and allowing us to meet the needs of one whilst keeping the rest protected.
Any further board comments or questions regarding the 25, 26 student code of conduct?
I have just a couple of quick questions. And these are just concerns that I've heard, just questions that have been asked. The first one is teachers who have, have use of phones in their classrooms for the classroom. Will that be allowed?
That's a good question. And we're, we're going to address that in our policy. So there's a couple of examples that we know about already, like our, some, our dual credit classes and AP classes require a dual sign in that requires your cell phone. So, but we're going to be very specific about what is allowed because this is going to be really difficult to enforce. But there are some situations where they're going to have to use the cell phone, but that's going to be permission given in, like, on a, like a list. These are the things that it's allowed for. So in that class, it would be allowed to pull it out and use it for that purpose and then it goes away. Now you're back under the policy. So there are a few others that we know about. We're going to develop a way for a teacher or a sponsor of a program to let us know. But we are not, there's not going to be a lot of room for discretion because this, it's a law again. And we're asking our administrators and teachers, teachers are going to have to enforce this in the classroom. And so if, if there's any discretion in it at all, it just falls apart right away. But yes, the answer is there will be some, some situations where it will be allowed, but it'll be very specific and known that that is one use that it can be used for.
Thank you. And then the other one, and this one's, it was a question, but it, there might be a gray area. But a couple of parents have asked about smartwatches that students wear for health reasons. Would that be a kind of modification that they could have?
The law also addresses students with a disability or a medical condition. Because I mean, we have students with a number of devices that monitor that, but the law already takes that into account. So, which helps us. And then we can just point to the law whenever it becomes an issue.
Thank you very much.
Just to let you know, it doesn't, it does, it does show the, that the, they can implement individualized education program, IEP for 504 Rehab Act of 1970. So they can use a 504. So.
That, that was actually debated for a long time and it was not, we were not sure how that was going to come out. But then ultimately they landed on what we've been doing for students with disabilities. So.
And if that, if that were the case, a student has her phone because their Dexcom for diabetes is on their phone, every teacher is going to know that from the IEP.
Correct.
Just a clarification, you are still ironing out the details as far as the punishments and the, like, the protocols that we're going to follow. But we're basically following the law. Is this essentially what you're saying? Right?
We are hardcore following the law.
Right. But we have, we don't have all our details.
But the law didn't go, in this case, did not go as specific as what the consequences, like number of days and things. They did do that, however, on the vaping side, you may have noticed in there that it, it took vaping off as a mandatory DAP. But then it mandated that if you do ISS, it has to be at least 10 days. Very interesting, very specific in terms of what the law. But we will, we will follow the law exactly how it is and, but it doesn't go as specific as like the number of days. Like if we decide how long we're going to keep a phone or something like that, we're going to develop that. But it'll be well known and well communicated before we ever start. We don't need any kind of confusion about that.
That's enough. If we're getting the weeds, like, because I know they used to like, get to pay money, get your phone back, that whole thing. Is that?
So they actually did away with that. So they, they, you can't do that. You can't charge. But then they beefed up very specifically that you can confiscate phones. So one argument has been for a long time with cell phones that that's personal property. You can't take that. And so the law addressed that and made it so that, yes, schools can confiscate that as it, because it was against the law to be using that at school. But they did away with being able to charge for it. So the charging won't be part of that process. It'll be, it'll be a level of confiscation and not being able to get it back.
So just in case someone says something, this is a big way to make money for the schools. That is not the case.
Yeah, it won't even be an issue. It's, it's interesting. We, for a long time, we've been giving parents a choice. Like you can leave it with us for three days or whatever, or you can pay the $15. or you can pay the $15, and there's a number of parents that are like, no, you keep that phone, keep that phone, I'm not paying the $15, you can, they don't need that, so.
And there are a number of parents that give you $60 for the next four times.
That has happened.
Wow.
They paid for this one, and then the next two times, but this, it won't be an option now, it'll be, well, it'll be with us for this period of time.
Dr. Mills, just, I know we discussed this in the pre-agenda meeting, just to kind of give some context and timeline with all of this, the first webinar that was available for districts was last week, with these changes in the model code of conduct, so, we attended that webinar. I want to commend Mr. Collin and Ms. Becerra, because after we attended that webinar, they took all that information we received, updated the code of conduct to have for you all in Friday Facts, and then we had to get in front of our staff, who, not all are back on contract, so, we met with them today in advance of this board meeting. We also discussed communication, because we know this is important for our parents. Communication will be going out on a regular basis, including communication and Dr. Moran's superintendent updates, so, we're not trying to delay on having all this information, and having all the consequences out, but it's important that we don't just make all of those consequence decisions from the district level, and we include our administrators that are on the campus in that decision-making. So, I just want to give you all an update, and just kind of an idea of how much work we've been putting in to get information out to you all, and our stakeholders as quickly as possible.
Yes, and I, and we, I know we all appreciate that, I know we're kind of working on the fly here, and it's coming at us real fast, and y'all are doing a great job, and I commend you, and I'm glad I don't have kids with phones yet, so.
Yeah, I might have mentioned, I might, I might have mentioned the law to my middle school student, and she's super excited about it, and I say that with sarcasm, because she is not excited about that, but they're gonna, they, they will realize how much better it is for them to not have to worry about that at school. Some of our older kids might tell you that already, that it is better for them, interactions and the things that they're gonna gain that they're missing right now, because they're so distracted by everything on the phone, so.
Mr. Collin, how about, like, the teachers, you know, when you're on duty, can a teacher have their cellphone out?
I don't think we've gotten that far, in terms of personal, personal cellphones, we already have it in our, in our employee handbook about use of personal devices, and protecting instructional time and things like that, but we haven't really gotten that far, the law doesn't address it, the law is specific to student use, so.
I just asked, because I was asked that question.
Yeah.
A student asked me that question.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, we.
If we, so, do I have a motion to approve the code of conduct for the 25, 26 school year?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion from Mr. Dindal, and a second from Dr. Mills, do I have any further board comments or questions regarding the student code of conduct for the 25, 26 school year? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same, motion passes 7-0. Dr. Self, we're gonna consider House Bill 3372 and restrictions on outside employment by administrators.
Good evening again, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, and members of the board. This isn't quite as riveting as the code of conduct, but I will do my best to do it justice. House Bill 3372 refers to a bill that aims to prevent conflicts of interest by restricting the types of paid work that school district administrators can undertake with outside entities. As you all know, our fearless leader at McGill Elementary, Mr. Colton Curtis, he is seeking board approval to continue his work with capturing kids' hearts through the Flippin Group. You were provided a signed CKH trainer agreement, I believe, last week for review, so that you could transparently see what that agreement between Mr. Curtis and the Flippin Group outlined. Just to provide some clarity, I'm gonna refer to the statute itself. An administrator means a person who has significant administrative duties relating to the operation of a school district, including the operation of a campus. It also clarifies that an administrator may not receive any financial benefit for the performance of personal services for any business entity that conducts or solicits business with the school district that employs the administrator. So, where we need to provide clarity for you all is that we do contract with the Flippin Group through, through our CKH endeavors, but statute also does provide some leeway and clarification that states, an administrator other than a member of the Board of Managers, Superintendent, or Assistant Superintendent may receive a financial benefit if a written contract describing the services to be performed by the administrator is provided, which you all have been provided a written contract. Also, the Board of Trustees for the administrators employing district votes to approve the contract after determining that the contract will not harm the district, and it doesn't present a conflict of interest, and the services to be carried out are actually gonna be performed on the administrator's personal time, which the contract actually outlines that as well. So, Mr. Curtis is just seeking your approval to continue his work with the Flippin Group and through CKH endeavors. Do you have any questions?
So, any time away, just to clarify, would be approved by his supervisor, and would not be, and per this contract, well, it says it cannot be done in lieu of their primary employee responsibilities.
Yes, sir, it cannot conflict with his job duties. Just to add another layer of clarification, he, when he does a contract with the Flippin Group, it is not work within the state of Texas, it is other outside entities, outside of Texas.
And per this contract, he has to continue to get approval when he does this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All right, do I have a motion to approve the, Mr. Curtis approved to work with the, continue to work with the Flippin Group?
I'll move to approve that Mr. Curtis continue to work, continue his work with the Flippin Group.
A motion from Mrs. Mizell Flint, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Mr. Dindal, any board comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same, motion passes 7-0. All right, Dr. Gomez, we're going to do our, approve the resolution for extracurricular status of the 4-H organization and adjunct faculty agreement, we have to do this annually, and this is just so our students who are involved in 4-H can get credit for that.
Yes, sir, you are correct. You should also have, if you do not, Ms. Ramirez and I will ensure you have a copy that needs to be signed, should the board approve this. As provided in Texas Administrative Code, public school students may be considered in attendance when participating in off-campus activities with an SAISD adjunct staff member. So, the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service of Tom Green County has requested this extracurricular status of the 4-H organization, and approval of adjunct staff members for the 2025, 2026 school year. This allows our students participating to be considered to be in attendance. The Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Staff requesting SAISD adjunct staff status are Allison Watkins, Courtney Redman, and Haley Meyer. The administration's recommendation is to approve the resolution of the extracurricular status of the 4-H organization and the adjunct faculty agreement.
Any board comments or questions regarding this one?
Dr. King, we've done this for many years, to provide additional opportunities for our students to produce, to participate in 4-H as an extracurricular activity, and with that, I'd move to approve the resolution for extracurricular status of the 4-H organization and the adjunct faculty agreement.
So, a motion from Mr. Dindal, and a second from Mr. Gallegos. Any further board comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same, motion passes 7-0. Dr. Gomez, we're gonna do our optional flexible school day program waiver, our PACE, this again is an annual approval.
Yes, sir. A student is eligible to participate in an optional flexible school day program. We have a lot of acronyms in the educational world, specifically OFSDP, authorized under the Texas Education Code, if the student is enrolled in grades nine through 12, and the student is at risk of dropping out of school, as defined by the Texas Education Code. With this application and approval, students attending such program may be counted in attendance for purposes of funding. I know that we do this annually, so I'm not trying to go through it quickly, but I'm also trying to honor your time.
Any questions or comments regarding the PACE waiver for the 25, 26 academic school year?
Should you choose to sign it, I'm sorry, Dr. Moran and Dr. Kingman, it was totally my error on the PDF. Ms. Gardinas, I have it right next to you on the left, I've reprinted pages seven and eight to include your name, title, and phone number, as I overlooked the title and phone number, so those are the correct pages, so you don't have to go back and re-sign. And again, that's my apologies, and completely my error, no one else's.
You're good. All right, so do I have a motion to approve the flexible school day program waiver for PACE?
I'll make a motion to approve the PACE, what's it, OFSPD, SDP waiver for the 2025, 2026 academic year.
And do I have a second? I have a motion from Mr. Gallegos, and a second from Mrs. Duncan. All, and any other board comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same, motion passes 7-0. Dr. Gomez, TASB Board Policy Update 125, from my jump drive.
Yes, sir, so we did speak about this in the pre-agenda meeting, as I referenced at that time, this update was quite small. I know we did provide you with a jump drive, but if you had the printed copies, it was only this thick for this update, and really a pretty simple update in comparison to update 126, which will not be available until October. As you all are aware, TASB legal policy is for board reference, we don't change those, it's local policy that boards have, have to actually adopt. So, in, again, in this update, there were not many changes, you've had an opportunity to look those over, I didn't plan to go in great detail, because those were not substantial changes. However, if you have any questions, I'm happy to take those. As we are studying a lot of legislative updates and changes, I'm going to fully confess, I have my full manual right here, if you have a very particular question, because I don't have every number from this update, and the latest legislative update memorized yet. But the administration does recommend the board add, revise, or delete local policies as recommended in the TASB policy service, according to what was presented to all of you.
Any board questions or comments regarding the TASB Board Policy Update 125? Do I have a motion to approve the TASB Board Policy Update 125? I'll make a motion to approve TASB Board Policy Update 125, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion for myself, and a second from Mr. Dindal, any comments or questions regarding Board Policy Update 125? Oh, I hear no comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same, motion passes 7-0. All right, not that we've been at this for a little while, but we're gonna keep at it, and we're gonna go into closed session under 551.071, 5.551.074, and we'll be back. We are back from executive closed session, we took no actions, took no votes. We're gonna move to item 10, which is to consider the superintendent evaluation, and after discussion, I will make the motion that we approve the superintendent evaluation as presented, or as discussed. Do I have a second?
A second.
So, a motion for myself, and a second from Mrs. Duncan, any board comments or questions regarding the superintendent evaluation? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same, motion passes 7-0. Next is the superintendent contract, and do I have a motion to approve, and, so, Dr. Moran has a three-year contract, right? Yes. And so, the motion, I make a motion to approve continuous contract as is, but with an additional year to continue to have a three-year rolling contract.
A second.
So, I got a motion for myself, and a second from Mrs. Mizell Flint, again, ladies first. And, she's, okay, so then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same, motion passes 7-0. Next are our board superintendent goals, which I have right here. So, each year, the board reviews a superintendent goals that will be up for adoption, so that we can then evaluate Dr. Moran in January and in June, like we've just done. And the proposed board superintendent goals for the 25, 26 year is goal number one, under, our first three goals are under academics. Goal number one is by August of 2028, Sanzillo ISD will ensure 100% of district campuses meet or exceed performance, federal performance standards in academic achievement and growth to avoid identification as a comprehensive support and improvement, or comprehensive progress campus. Goal number two is Sanzillo ISD will engage in the Head Start Program with the goal of actually enrolling students, providing professional learning, and offering high-quality education for Head Start students, and a safe learning environment for the Head Start Program. Goal, um, goal number three is, we will increase this, the percentage of students meeting the expected growth measure for NWEA MAP testing grades, two through eight reading, English 1, English, and English 2 by 8%, and grades three through eight math and algebra 1 by 10%. Goal number four, which is under recruitment and retention, would be to expand the teacher incentive allotment program to include pre-K2 reading, third through fifth math and reading, fifth grade science, eighth grade science, biology, uh, eighth grade science and biology, eighth grade social studies and United States history. And goal number five is under innovative learning spaces, which would be to construct school facilities outlined in the Sanzillo ISD Bond 2025 proposal approved by voters in the May 3 election, to address aging facilities, construct new facilities, and address safety and security at all campuses, and address deferred maintenance across the district, which means to follow through on what we said we would do. And then, be able to hold, as we've talked before, as a board, like, one of our biggest levers is how we hold the superintendent accountable for what we expect the district to do. So, any comments or questions regarding the board goals as presented? I know these have been in Friday Facts and stuff, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, because we haven't actually had an opportunity to talk about it in person. Everyone good?
Motion necessary, to approve?
Um, I think we need to, yes. So, do I have a motion?
I came to move to approve the board superintendent goals as presented.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
So, a motion from Mr. Dindal, and a second from Dr. Mills, any further board comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all against, say the same, motion passes 7-0. All right, just want to make sure, before I hit that gavel. Announcements, we'll have our finance and pre-agenda workshop on August 11th, 2025, at 5:45, and our regular board meeting on August 18th, 2025, at 5:45. Any other board comments or questions, issues? With that, we are adjourned.